Kicking off right around three o'clock here, we're set up to have a good, busy, working agenda and several things to cover. So, we'll start off by asking, Ms. City Secretary, do you have anything that you need? Are you ready to go?
No, Mayor, I think we're ready.
All right. If you guys would, we have Chad Johnson coming this morning to give the invocation, or this afternoon to give the invocation. If you would all please stand and stay standing for the pledges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Friends, let us pray. Holy and gracious God, we give thanks on this day that we can gather here in this place. Lord, we give thanks for the wonderful city of Amarillo that we all call home and love so dearly. Lord, we pray over our meeting today, the words that will be spoken, and the meditations of our heart, let them be pleasing to you. It is in Christ's holy and precious name we pray all of this, and together we say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. If you guys will join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, guys. Please be seated. All right. We are moving right into our announcements, item number five. Do I have any announcements, Mr. City Manager, that you need to make?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number six is public comment. Going to hand this over to our City Secretary and ask her to read us into that and conduct it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's City Council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad that you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address City Council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council, both during public comment or during a public hearing, if you speak during a public hearing today. We ask that you keep, if you have a public hearing you wish to speak on, we ask that you make your comment for that public hearing either during public comment or during the public hearing, but not both, in order to help us keep accurate records. It's your decision at which point you would like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live within Amarillo city limits. If addressing council on an agenda item on today's agenda, please state your position, so we may reflect that properly in the minutes. If you are speaking to an item not on today's agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act limits how elected officials may respond. Council may respond with statements of fact. They may ask that your topic be added to a future agenda, or they may refer the matter to the City Manager who can have staff step out and visit with you regarding your topic. So again, thank you for being here today to share your thoughts with City Council. At this time, we would invite up Alan Feingold, and on deck after Alan will be Beth Duke.
Alan Feingold, I am a resident of the city of Amarillo. I would like to ask a few questions of some city officials. They may want to answer at length, so I'm asking permission of Mayor Stanley to ask them the questions without having their replies subtracted from the time allotted to me to make comments to the City Commission. Would you allow this, Mr. Stanley?
So, we'll ask you to go ahead and give your public comment. After public comment expires, I'll direct you to the staff, and then we'll be able to answer your question off to the side.
Well, if that's the way it is required, then I will make that comment. But it would be best if I could ask these individuals questions, so that I do not make presumptions about their answers.
I appreciate that, and if we have any statements of fact, we'll be sure to give those to you at the end of your public comment time.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
First, I would like to know whether there is any jurisdictional division between the individual who is head of the Water and Sewer Department, or Utility Department, and the individual who is head of the Facilities Department. In particular, I would like to know who is responsible for the maintenance of the buildings at the River Road Wastewater Treatment Facility, and particularly, who is responsible for the condition of the generator and old shop buildings at the River Road Wastewater Treatment Facility. Since I do not hear any reply, I'm going to assume that this is the responsibility of both departments, and particularly of the individual who is responsible for facilities maintenance. So, I'm going to read you a project number that was determined by the previous council for the purpose of capital improvements in November 2019, project number 523-218. And the project is repair or replace the roofs as required at the administration generator and old shop buildings as needed. Possible funding of $100,000. Now, I'd like to read you another project, 523-223, MCC Electrical Panels, where the plant's eight pump stations are located in a wet environment, creating safety and electrical hazards. The wet environment is causing metal components inside the electrical panels to rust and corrode, causing equipment failure. Thank you very much.
Mr. Feingold, I appreciate that. I would refer you to Jerry Danforth, right over here, at the permission of our City Manager, to get further information on this, and then I'd be happy to follow up with you myself. But I don't believe we would be able to speak conclusively to these items here today.
Thank you.
You want to redirect?
I was going to have, I could have Donnie Hooper reach out to Mr. Feingold as well.
Okay. So, we'll have Mr. Hooper reach out to you, Alan. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next is Beth Duke.
My name is Beth Duke, and I'm a native of Amarillo, Texas, and I'm proud of it, and proud of our city. Thank you for letting me have a few minutes this afternoon in your beautiful new headquarters, just to talk about some of the great things going on in our city. We started this quarter, as many of you know, dedicating those beautiful gateway arches, thanks to the Center City Tax Increment Zone, and now they light up at night, and they just are a welcoming beacon to our downtown. We finished our 31st season of High Noon on the Square. We averaged about 400 to 500 people every weekday, every week, and it was just wonderful, because we had all ages, all stages, and people from every neighborhood. And I hope you were able to make at least one of those. We're also continuing our public art project with hoof prints. You know, that project started in 2002 with 10 horses, and now we have more than 130. And what makes me so proud is that many of the newer businesses coming into Amarillo want one. And so, our board has told me, we're going to keep selling horses as long as people want them. Big, big thanks that the Polk Street streetscape is finally completed. You know, this was authorized in 2016, and now we can say it is completed. And when you come downtown Saturday morning for the Tri-State Fair Parade, you're going to see the beautiful new sidewalk. Every quarter, Center City reports our reinvestment figures to Texas Main Street. And for this quarter, we recorded more than $47 million, with the largest investment being $44 million for the loft, the new youth center at First Baptist. Big news for donut lovers, we've got a new donut shop going at 15th and Washington, and the new Santa Fe Credit Union is also under construction at 15th and Harrison. Downtown office space is filling up. Between 350 and 400 employees of Pantex are now in the Happy State Bank Building. We have 50 Gold Star Trust employees in the Happy State Bank Building. First Bank Southwest has bought another 35 employees downtown in the First Bank Tower, and Golden Spread Electrical Cooperative Building has leased space to Insurica, which needed more office space. You've probably seen, the Potter County Courts Building has been torn down, and it will become additional parking for county employees and residents. Oops. We worked with AM Tech, design students, on an architectural project. It was wonderful, and they had some great ideas. We hope to make that annual. We also nominated our beautiful new city hall for Best Restoration for the Texas Downtown Awards, and I am very competitive on awards, and I really hope we get it. I know there's some other people who hope we get it, too. And then I save the best for last. Mayor, this is the number I was telling you about. I went back to 2007, and since 2007, our reinvestment in our downtown is more than $886 million.
Wow.
Wow. That's right. I know. Just a second.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ambassador. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lawton Wilkerson. Lawton Wilkerson. If not, Mike Goss. And after Mike will be Eric White.
My name's Mike Goss. I'm a lifetime resident of Amarillo, and have lived in the colonies for the last 11 years. And I'm here to speak about ordinance 8216 at the council table last, two weeks ago. First off, I'd like to say, like I said, I've lived in the colonies for 11 years, and Rock Rose was a developer there, and they've done an outstanding job developing that neighborhood. Everything is first class. There's no complaints about it. The PID board has done a good job keeping the neighborhoods up. The new business park that's going in there, all the citizens that I've talked to, the residents of the colony, are very supportive of it. They, they know it'll be a nice first-class business park. They're just questioning why they should pay for that. We received a letter from the city on August 26th, which was really the first we had heard about that. Even members of the HOA Board didn't know about this. The letter stated that there would be a 1% increase in the PID fee for this next year. Well, that's not exactly correct. It's not 1%. It went, it went up from 14 cents per square foot to 15 cents per square foot, which is, which is about 7%. But there was no, and there was also no mention of the commercial rate going up. They have a different rate than we do. It's, it's 10 cents. It's quite a bit less than ours, a little over 10 cents. And there's no mention of the million-dollar bond that's being, the commission's being asked to approve. And that last item, the bond, is what's really caused the most concern. And the reason, I think, is, a big part of it is the maps. I gave y'all some little small ones to look at. But the Rock Rose developed that, and I always look at their website to see where the PID area is and the different divisions in the PID. And that's what we based our, I guess, protest on, was that map. Right now, Tom. The city has shown us, there's three different maps I found. One of those were online, two I got from Kerry Roberts, but they're all a little bit different. And that's, that's a problem. You know, we need one map that we can rely on. The other issue is, there's, there's been very little communication from the PID board to the HOA, to the residents of the colonies. Like I said, okay. Most of the, most of the residents didn't have, like I said, didn't have any idea about this bond that was coming due. I've looked on the city website, and I can find all the postings for the city, the agendas for those meetings, but there's never many minutes posted for the, for the PID meetings I'm speaking of. So, you can't go back and see, see what was even discussed. So, what, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, this business park, but what I am, I am opposed to this million-dollar bond. The colonies already carries about $6 million in debt, and this is going to add a million. And then there's another phase to it that'll probably add close to that again next year, or whenever they develop that next park. I think we should be very conservative with that PID money and work towards paying it off rather than increasing it if we can. The residents have already funded develops, developments in the residential area by their, purchasing their lots and paying their PID fees, and they also pay that drainage fee, which is what this park is for. So, I think in the future, if it's possible for future PIDs, maybe if the commercial and residential could be two different entities, two different PIDs, and each have their own PID fees and associated bonds. That might help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Next is Eric White.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, my name's Eric White. I'm a longtime resident of Amarillo. I'm a 20-something-year resident of the colonies, and I've also been working in and out of the colonies in several different aspects. I'm a residential builder. A lot of you guys know me, and I've been developing commercial property over there for the last probably 12 to 15 years. So, I'm just here today to speak on the item number nine, as far as like the, which is going to be the, the bond, that will take care of the drainage issue that we had in commercial development on the, on the west side of the property. But what I want to do today is, is really thank Rock Rose for their forethought in trying to fix the drainage problem that they could see, like I said, on the west side. And I think the PID board members for going together and coming up with a solution that works for everybody. But I do want to address one thing, and I think there's a, a lot of miscommunication out there about how this thing ended up, because it wasn't the cart before the horse. It wasn't us looking for a way to find public improvement, so that we can make our, our part better. When I walked into Matt's office the day, Matt Griffith with Rock Rose, and this project was going to take shape, that was already established. So, those ideas were already on the board. They were looking for a way to solve some of the commercial drainage on that side of the colonies. And as a commercial developer, I had one client looking for one place to build one building, and when I saw the proposed, what they were going to propose to the PID board as far as fixing the drainage, it was a, apparent to me that we could use that for the benefit of the colonies, and for the benefit of that development, too. So, I think the whole idea was to be able to take some of the stuff that they did on the, on the west side, where we tied into the Amarillo Town Club, and be able to take the same concepts and apply it to, yeah, the east side, to the west side, and to be able to go out towards the toasted yolk. And so, as a developer, we would have never taken on a project like this without that proposal in place before we started. So, I just want everybody to know, this wasn't a deal where a developer walked in there and said, hey, how do we take advantage of the citizens of the colonies and do something for the benefit of us? We went in there and said, hey, as a commercial developer, if they're going to put in this drainage easement, and we're going to have this deal, and it's going to be a lot like what they did at the Greenways, where the Greenways Village drained in, and they did that, and they tied it into the Greenways Parks, that made it appealing for us to be able to put our commercial development in there. So, I want to thank the PID board for forethought and putting it together, and I want to thank Rock Rose for finding a way to solve the drainage issues for all of the commercial property, not just ours, but everybody's going forward. So, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes everyone that signed up today.
Okay. As always, I will take a show of hands. Anyone who'd like to offer public comment? I'll remind everyone here, we do have a public hearing on this item. If you'd like to speak at that time, you can. Do we not have a public hearing on it?
Not on this item, no.
So, we already had the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I would remind everyone, we do not have a public hearing on this item, so now would be a good time for you to speak. So, yeah, Councilman Simpson keeps me straight. So, yes, sir, if you remind us your name and, and that you do reside in the colonies, speak up.
Yes, sir. Thanks so much. My name is Lee McCammon. I am a resident of the city of Amarillo, and I also live in the colonies. And I want to thank you all for allowing me to stand up and speak two weeks ago and bring this to light, and it's created a lot of conversation, a lot of good conversation, some not-so-good conversation. But I do have a statement I'd like to read. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am speaking today as a resident of the colonies, but I want to be clear that my statement today represents my opinions and my thoughts. I in no way want to convey that I am speaking on behalf of other residents of the colonies. Last night, a special meeting in the colonies' HOA was called to specifically discuss the landscape and drainage project currently under construction. In attendance were two members of the colonies' PID board, members of the colonies' HOA board, the project contractor, and many colonies' residents. During the presentation and conversation that followed, it became clear that we have little choice but to acquiesce to the issuance of a $1 million bond to fund this project, to avoid accruing greater debt moving forward. I want to be very clear, acquiescence should not be mistaken for all-out support. The justifications we heard were that the extensive landscaping and walkways are necessary in order to attract businesses that meet the colonies' standard. I continue to believe this project is excessive. It is my belief that it subsidizes the developer, enhancing the value of the commercial property far more than it benefits the residents who are paying for the vast majority of the project. I do not believe the so-called pedestrian walkway will be used to the extent as described, and it is hard to see how colonies' homeowners truly gain from this expenditure. More importantly, I believe the PID process itself is flawed. A PID board and city council should not have the power to place $1 million of debt on the residents of a district without demonstrating majority support from those that will carry that burden. General obligation bonds require a ballot referendum. Why is a PID bond different? While PID meetings may be posted on the city's website, there is no meaningful notification process, and minutes are not accessible online. The lack of transparency makes it nearly impossible for residents to engage until products, projects are already underway. I do appreciate that a plan was proposed last night to improve communications going forward, but that does little to correct the process that has led us to this place. For now, the residents of the colonies are being forced to accept another $1 million in debt, debt for a project that I believe provides far more benefit to the commercial property owners than to the families who actually fund the majority of the PID. Thank you for your time and listening to this resident of the colonies.
Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else who'd like to offer a public comment here today? Mr. Fisher, I saw your hand. If you'd come forward.
All right. I'd like to have a little bit of extra time. I try not to go over. I noticed everybody else is getting a little bit.
Better talk fast. We'll go just.
All right. I will. I don't get that colonies' time. I live in the ghetto colonies. I'm in Sleepy Hollow.
I'm right by you guys. But I've got something for you guys. I'm going to change what I'm talking about because of you guys. And, and what's going on over there is greed. We have the Adderberries. Everybody knows that page that that guy runs. Remember you said that? That you guys ought to see over in the colonies, there's a lot at Hillside and in the colonies, at Hillside and Sonti. It's a million dollars, it's worth over a million dollars. It's less than an acre. They pay like 50 bucks in property taxes. This is crazy, that they're going to pay a million bucks for, for the, this is, the Adderberries and the Wares, it's nothing but greed. It's unbelievable. These guys can't pay for their own drainage. And that whole section of it's lot after lot that's getting, and we should be auditing these, because that's taxes that could have been going, going towards the budget, because that's not an appropriate exemption they're getting on that million-dollar lot. And that's just one example. The exemption should be for 10 acres or more. So, that's a fraudulent exemption. Why are we auditing the properties within the city limits to make sure that they're getting, that the exemptions are, are correct? Otherwise, we might have that money, we might not need a street tax, and we might not need all, need all these PIDs, because these PIDs are nothing more than just the street tax. It looks like we're trying to create a new tax to make up for the budget shortfall, so we can pay for million-dollar developments for the Wares and the Adderberries. And to these guys over here, that whole section over there, it's, they're paying nothing on those taxes, and that whole section of it, they're paying next to nothing. We should be auditing those. We just have to cut, we're having to cut the raise to police officers, so the Adderberries can get their drainage or whatever it is, and get, and get what, what they want. I mean, they're doing this all over town, guys. City View, they screwed those guys. They go and build a cheese factory adjacent to City View. Adderberries developed that property, too, but they wait till it gets developed, and then they cram a cheese factory in behind the development. And, and our city was part of that, and we're encouraging that, and we're giving them all those payments. The one thing that I came here to talk about wasn't that. So, if you give me a minute, I'll get done, and give me one extra minute. It's, it's right here downtown. I'm talking about, it's, in this city, it looks like we have a, a set of two versions of building code. The official one for the rest of us, and the invisible one for the Wares and, and the properties they own. There's a restaurant right here downtown, no sprinklers, and I'm just picking that one thing, but there's a lot of other codes that, that get relaxed for, I won't say the name of the restaurant, because it's leased, but it's owned by you-know-who, the Wares. No sprinkler. There's a black man that is trying to open a sports bar on Sixth Street, and our city, and you guys probably know exactly who it is, he didn't ask me to speak, he probably would tell me not to. 1,700 square feet, and they told him he needs a sprinkler system in a 1,700-square-foot building, because they counted the outdoor area, and we got a 3,000-square-foot restaurant that's owned by you-know-who, that doesn't have to have a sprinkler. that's owned by you-know-who that doesn't have to have a sprinkler. This is going on all over town, guys, and if you're not borrowing money from the Wares or if you're not in a building they own, then you get, you get the royal treatment, which is bad from the city. What can we do about that, guys? I can talk to you and give you names, they don't ask to speak for them.
Mayor, we appreciate you speaking. Send that to me, I'll work on it.
That's what you say every time.
On that, on that address, send that to me. So I don't have that. Okay, I see Ms. Benson in the back, if you'd come forward. Ms. Kim, I apologize, Mr. Fisher used most of your time, so you'll have some.
I was really hoping Mr. Fisher would come up here and breakdance for you guys, but...
On his way up.
He didn't. He didn't.
All right.
I'm here to, Kim Benson, City of Amarillo, I'm here to talk about 8C. Mr. Simpson wanted to talk about the board appointments, and I'm glad that you did bring that up, Mr. Simpson, because I'd serve on two boards. One board, I really haven't got to serve because we can't meet, because we don't have quorum. And I bought, it's a volunteer position, I get that, but when you guys are picking your board members and the staff is recommending to continue somebody on that board, that you look at their attendance, because if they're not there and they're not serving, boards can't meet, and that's a problem. I know it's volunteer, but we do apply for those positions, and so I think when you're applying, it's like a job, you put forth that effort. And I'm not trying to cut anybody, because I know everybody has something going on. Mr. Prescott's not here today. We all have things going on, but it is difficult if you can't meet quorum and you can't, you can't accomplish anything. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Mrs. Claudette, if you'd come forward.
Does it matter which one?
No, either one.
I actually didn't plan on coming up here today, but something happened right before, and I was just down the street. So you, you guys have spoken many times about cutting the red tape here at City Hall, especially like in Building Safety, the Fire Marshal's Office, et cetera. You guys have talked about how you've streamlined processes for businesses and made things easier, but I'm here to tell you firsthand, from firsthand experience, that the reality does not match the rhetoric. Here's just one example, a local business owner that I've been helping trying to obtain his certificate of occupancy for a certain suite in a building. Now, this same building had received its certificate of occupancy just three weeks ago after all of the fire marshal requirements were met. Nothing has changed in the building, same walls, same safety standards, same plans, and yet this business owner has been stuck in a maze of delays, unanswered phone calls, and empty offices when he tries to schedule a fire marshal inspection. Now, Building Safety has already signed off, so clearly Johnny Shoal has his ducks in a row in his department. The only thing holding him back now is, you know, silence and inaction from the Fire Marshal's Office. Now, this, this has just been going on for the past few weeks, and I've only been involved for the past 48 hours or so. My point is, that's not cutting the red tape. I just went down to the Fire Marshal's Office myself to try and schedule an inspection so that we can get this streamlined, as you guys keep saying you're doing, but no one was in the office. The lights were out, rang the doorbell, no one's there. I mean, we've called several times today, left messages. I sent an email just before I came in here, but my point is, this is not an isolated case. Over the past year, I've heard from countless business owners in Amarillo and people that want to invest here, create jobs here, and grow here, who instead run into the same walls of bureaucracy and inspections that can't be scheduled, contradictory requirements from different departments, permits that sit untouched for weeks, and lack of communication that leaves businesses or business owners just guessing. So when, when you're in chambers here, it's easy to talk about streamlining, but when you're out in the real world trying to open your doors and pay your employees, it looks very different. The red tape isn't being cut, it's being shifted, hidden and wrapped tighter. So if you guys truly want to be business-friendly, then we need more than just speeches, we need accountability, we need city departments answering the phones, showing up to work, and applying consistent emphasis there on consistent standards. We need processes that make sense and don't punish people for trying to do business in this city. Until then, the promise of cutting red tape remains just that, a promise, and promises don't keep the lights on, businesses do. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, thank you for speaking. Mr. Path, who would you like to connect with Ms. Smith, see if we can help her reconcile that issue today?
I can have Andrew with her. We, we need specifics, not just general allegations, and so, but specifics would help us as we, as we try to work on this, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, Andrew can work on this item.
Great. Ms. Smith, if I can ask you to stay until we take our recess, so Mr. Freeman can get with you, let's see what we can do to get that resolved. Thank you, ma'am. Do I have any, anyone else who'd like to offer public comment here today? Okay. At this point in time, we'll close public comment, we'll move into our consent agenda. Item seven, the consent agenda. Counsel, do you have anything that you'd like pulled off for further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. Would entertain a motion on seven.
I move to accept the consent agenda as stated.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a four-zero vote. Moving on to item number eight. Let's go to item 8A. Counsel, do I have anything that you need to review on the overall agenda before we move into 8B?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, can I ask a question? I know we've reconfigured some of our agenda to help facilitate business and whatnot. Item 8A, is that a legal requirement, or is that just kind of tradition that we always keep that one in?
That's completely up to counsel. I mean, that's just a traditional thing.
Counsel, thank you. Counsel, can I ask with you guys, would anyone have an objection, and we can check with Councilman Prescott? Item 8A is kind of more traditional for, do you guys need something? We, we don't really attend to business this way right now. It's, it's just a tripping hazard at this point to get through. You guys be okay if we remove that moving forward? No issues? Okay. So I think moving forward, if we can address that agenda item, it'll help. Item 8B, AEDC, we have Doug Nelson coming up here to go over his budget. Afternoon, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Got a couple of short presentations for you today. The first is going to be just really a summary of our budget request for the fiscal year All right, we're going to go through some budget highlights. Total revenue for Amarillo Economic Development Corporation, we anticipate to be a little over $30 million, $30,165,385. That's really broken down into two funds, an operational fund and a project fund. The operational fund is 12% of the tax revenue goes to the operational fund, 88% of the tax revenue goes to the project fund. So broken down, that's $3.45 million for the operation fund and $26.7 million for the project fund. Looking then at our expenditures in those two funds, I broke down the operational fund a little bit more than I did the project fund, but we can get into the nitty-gritty of it in some following slides. But personnel expenses, $1.3 million, that's in the operation fund. Also in the operation fund, supplies, professional fees, fiscal agent expenses, $218,500. Auto communication travel and local expenses of $71,500. Rental and insurance expenses of $172,500, and our business development expenses of In the project fund, this is the fund that actually funds all the company incentives that we do, all the workforce incentives, all, all those things. We have company and incentive expenses of $22.6 million and project fund other expenses of $1.322. So as you can see, revenue over expenses, we will be putting money in the bank this year, that is the anticipation. This budget was approved by the Amarillo EDC Board on August 12th. And of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do have about 10 pages of additional detail that we could go through if you so desire.
I know a few of those actually came down, I think, from last year. Yes, sir. Didn't necessarily have to tighten your belt to make your, your revenues work, you just brought items more in line with what your needed expenditures are moving forward. I think, not a question, but just maybe a comment, we, meaning just myself up here, who I'm speaking for, and hopefully the rest of us, see that you guys are going a good direction. And, and we appreciate the leadership, we appreciate the teamwork. I think the new board that you have down there is, is heads up and making a lot of good progress. You also are stacked with some successes coming in that, that you're going to be able to move forward in and announcing that are all things Amarillo and, and kind of what we drive for here economically. So we would just invite you to come back if there's something that has an ROI on it and it's not in that budget. We appreciate the tight budget.
Yes, sir.
I think the, the constraint on that is, is show us what you need and then let us move with you. And so we just open that up and, and tell you, we, we appreciate the hard work and look forward to seeing what you guys can do here over the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No further questions? Nothing? Okay. We'll keep moving. That one's in your packet for later, so if you, if you do have anything, we can revisit it, but we wanted to have a little discussion item. Mr. Nelson, thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
On, on to item 8C. All right, boards and commissions, we have Mrs. Coggins coming up here to walk us through that discussion item.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, we are coming upon this season to do our board and commission appointments. We do this annually, and I know a few of you have done it before and a few of you are new, and so we wanted to walk through today kind of that, that process, what the timeline looks like. And then we also want to hand it over to Councilmember Simpson, because this was a request he had to discuss boards and commissions, and I believe the selection process, and have that conversation as well. So I am going to very quickly take you through, we have approximately 65 positions to fill this year. For 2025, we've got a list of 27 different boards on the screen here. These are all the boards that will have vacancies. Some have current vacancies to fill, and most have positions that are coming open on January 1st. The requirements for an individual to serve on a City of Amarillo Board or Commission, they have to be a registered voter, they cannot be indebted to the city, which is lined out in our charter, and it's very similar to the regulation that you had where you cannot be indebted to be a council member as well. And then we have a provision that they shall also possess such expertise as the council may require by this chapter for service on a particular board, so if there's requirements for a specific board. As far as the residency requirements, they have to be a resident of Potter or Randall County, and our code states that it's preferred they be a registered voter of the City of Amarillo. However, council may appoint any person that's not registered to vote in the city if they bring exceptional subject matter knowledge or expertise to serve on a board. One of the things that we are looking at doing this year is updating the municipal code in our chapter for boards and commissions. We had a comprehensive rewrite of that code back in 2015 to remove some outdated boards that were no longer there, to add and codify some boards that had been added. And then we had a very small update in 2021 to require members to reside in Potter or Randall County. Prior to 2021, they could reside anywhere, we didn't have any residency requirements. So what we would like to do, we're looking at a proposed ordinance to bring before you in October, and this would do a couple of things. First of all, it would just be a cleanup to codify some boards that are no longer in existence, that are still in our code, we would delete those, and then add some new boards that have been added by resolution over the years and actually codify those into this boards and commissions chapter. And then it would also be an opportunity to codify some things, and, and we would look for your feedback as I talk about these, on either if you want anything codified on the process for members of Potter or Randall County to apply, on the selection process, or any requirements to serve on a specific board. And so I will give you one example, if you'll recall back when we were doing some board appointments earlier this year, council discussed the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board. Right now, it requires a council member serve on that board. And so one of the updates we would bring on this ordinance change would be to remove that council member requirement, change that to a citizen or a regularly at-large member. And then for the Parks and Recreation Board, change that to require a council member on that board. So things like that, or if there's any requirements for specific boards where you think it would really make sense for someone to have a certain kind of experience or fit a certain category, like some of our boards that require an engineer or an architect, things like that. And so we would definitely look for your feedback. If, if you think through that and you have ideas, I would ask that you share those with Mr. Path or myself, and we can be sure that we work those into that proposed update. As far as the timeline for the process on appointments, after we finish this meeting today, so this afternoon or potentially first thing in the morning, we are going to open applications. And so we would ask that you share this out with your constituents, with our community, and we'll share it out as well. Our OEI department will help get it on social media, that if anyone is interested in applying, we invite them to, to apply, and I'll share that link here in a moment. We will take applications through October 27th, and at that time, we'll close them down to give staff a little bit of time to get applications, resumes, everything together, so that we can provide counsel with a packet on November 4th. And then we would look at doing board appointments on November 18th and/or November, excuse me, December 9th. And so one of the things that came up, an idea from one of the council members that I'll share with you, was to maybe split those appointments into two meetings, just so it's not such a heavy meeting, doing them in one. And so we'd look for some feedback from you today on that, if, if that's something council would want to entertain, to split it up and have a little bit lighter. What we'd do in that case is, any current vacancies, we would make sure we address those on November 18th and, along with some of the other boards, and then bring everything back on December 9th. Any questions on timeline or any feedback on how you guys would like to go about appointing?
I mean, I don't know about the policy, but I know we talked about this the other day, but I agree with Ms. Benson on attendance. For anybody that's currently serving, I think attendance should be a requirement that we should be able to see as a part of their application, what meetings they attended, what meetings they didn't.
So we can provide that information to you, council member tips, and Ms. Benson's comments were great. In your municipal code, we require 75% attendance, or it says council may replace a member. And so we have a, a system that we use to track our boards and commissions members, and we can track attendance in that.
Have we been aware of that before?
We've shared it, I don't know that we shared it with this council last year when we did appointments. In prior years, we've actually put a little report together, we've exported that information out. It's a one-year report, but it gives you an idea for the year what their attendance is, and we can add a percentage in there, and we can highlight. And I, I will say, and it was with Parks and Rec with Michael Kishuba, we worked with him, because they had a member one year that signed up, was appointed, and made one meeting, and then didn't show up again. And so on that one, we brought that forward to council as a recommendation of, we may want to look at replacing him with someone that can be, can, can have the time commitment needed.
Okay.
So I will say on that, too, we are working with the application a little bit to add some extra questions in there, try to get some more information. And we've also added back in the option to attach a resume, or we've asked them to send one to citiesecretary@amarillo.gov, so that you have more information on these applicants and can be better informed when you're making your decisions. On that, we're adding some specific questions as well, or some specific statements that they will consent to, and one of those mentions, that very section in our chapter 2-6 that says the attendance must be 75% of meetings. And so catching them on the front end when they sign up to say, hey, this is what I'm committing to, yes, I agree.
Okay, great.
So on the meetings, do, do most of it, because the one thing that that 75% doesn't take care of is meetings that never happen, because you don't get a quorum and you keep bumping it down the road, and the next thing, you have another and another. So that, and that really doesn't, even though somebody may have attended 75%, if that one or two people are continuing to cause the delay, it just puts it on down there. So my, my question would be, when people are applying to serve on a specific board, I mean, do we have the next two-year meetings? I mean, can, can, can we say, this is when the meetings are? When you check this box, you are affirming that you're going to, you know, to have some type of, to, to have them commit upfront?
type of, that, to, to have them commit upfront that these dates are ones that they are going to set aside?
I am going to give you a rough, rough estimate and say for probably eighty, eighty-five percent of our boards, we could do that. Many of them, like council, have very set specific, like Parks and Rec has their set, they're this week of the month, this day of the, the week. And so, we could do that for most of them. Now, some of the boards, uh, meet more on an as-needed basis, um, and so, those would be a little trickier, but we could work. I could definitely take that feedback, work with Mr. Path and with our board liaisons and see if we can't come up with a, a more consistent schedule even on those boards that we haven't historically, um, and we can add that in there. One of the things great about our application system that we are looking at utilizing that we haven't in the past is board-specific questions. And so, for example, if somebody goes and they want to apply for beautification and public arts, we could add a question that says, these meetings are second and fourth Tuesdays at eleven thirty-eight AM. Can you make this work? And get, get their confirmation on the front end.
And then, I wonder if another thing, because again, if, if one group meets four times a year, you know, depending, I mean, you may be well into the second year, but I mean, you're, you're at the end of a two-year term and somebody's not attended seventy-five percent. I just wonder if another metric we might want to look at is, uh, to, to somehow flag it and bring attention. If somebody misses two consecutive meetings, maybe at that point, there, there's some type of thing to make sure to maybe follow up with them, to make sure that they can keep the commitment, because, you know, if it's a two-year term and they're not meeting on a regular basis, it's going to take quite some time to come up with a seventy-five percent. But if someone's missed two consecutive meetings and you're only having four meetings a year, that's really not a very productive, you know, member for whatever reason. So, there may be, there's some, another metric that we can look at that just doesn't allow that type, you know, to continue. And I, I, I know conflicts come up, but if we can get the data in front and just say, you know, if you miss two consecutive meetings and, and you're only meeting four times a year, that, that's really half the work that you missed out on when there may be somebody else that could, could be on a regular basis.
We can look at what something like that would look like, and I can look at, I've looked at a few cities and I can look at some other cities to see what they're doing as well in their codes. Um, I will say there are several cities I've looked at where it's not council may replace you, it's you are automatically removed from that board if your attendance drops below a certain percentage, or you could do the same. If you miss two consecutive meetings, three consecutive meetings, then you're automatically removed from the board. And so, that could be an avenue we go as well if, if council has an appetite for that.
Or maybe, maybe two is a, a warning and, and, or something like that, but yeah, any, whatever you think.
Okay.
Yeah, in, in line with that, I would say attendance criteria, you know, putting it on council where council may replace you even though you've reapplied and you're saying you're still willing to serve is difficult, I think, sometimes, especially if, if staff is making recommendations based on expertise, right? And so, I think if you had a little more forewarn, warning, um, this individual doesn't qualify anymore, they have this expertise, and you are going to need them in the next three months. My question would be, to improve criteria, do we have the opportunity to allow virtual and, and then that way would allow that attendance?
So, we have some ability, and I'm going to lean on Brian here to correct me, but these boards fall under the same rules that you do as a council under Texas Open Meetings Act. And so, if there was a quorum of the board present in a physical location and your chair or presiding officer is there, then any other board members would be able to join virtually.
So, I think knowing that that can be a heavier lift on staff, like now we're in the new facility, we, we now have hopefully opportunity to, to utilize like Suite 1500 and some other areas. If, if we have that ability for virtual attendance, then I think council would feel a little bit better in doing the seventy-five percent minimum, but, you know, maybe if you drop below sixty percent, that means you're really not making the, you know, the majority of them, then you're not allowed to apply again for service. Not that we would remove you. I think council always should have the opportunity to remove anybody if they, if they needed to due to the nature of the, the authority, but then outside of that, just a, this is the consequences that we've all agreed to. You have a virtual opportunity as well as, you know, you can't reserve, you know? My, my other question would be, we've always allowed council to nominate people, and, and sometimes we nominate off of the applicant list, and I know that that can cause some issues as, as individuals are applying to serve, wanting to get involved, and then not getting selected at the same time that we're pulling somebody off of the sidelines that may or may not have understood what they're serving for. So, would council want to direct maybe more of a must-apply, uh, in order to be selected for the nomination rather than just allowing a nomination? Um, and so, that would put it in your hands, Mrs. Coggins, where, yeah, they checked the boxes, they understood what was, um, you know, incumbent upon them, their responsibilities. And so, I, I know that up here on council, we don't have an issue. We have many people that put in, you know, hours and hours every week to serve, and, and we're not asking anybody to do anything we're not doing, but I think we're asking for it to be more, uh, on the front end. I think you know what you're getting into when you run the campaign. You may not know what you're getting into when somebody just nominated you and said, hey, would you mind sitting on a board? Counsel, some feedback on maybe changing that, making it a little more strict, that you've got to at least go through the exercise of, of applying?
I, I got one thing, I just, maybe another issue that leads back around to this issue, which is, you know, the way that it's kind of come to now is pretty much the first person that makes a motion and gets a second on it, that person is on there. You don't want to openly, uh, you know, vote against someone. You know, what I would look, like to look at i- is maybe a process where, uh, and again, there may be many times where, and it's not that for me personally that I'm going to necessarily want to learn more about people that want to serve, but when, when we've got, I don't know how many people apply, they, they usually say they want to be on three boards, they usually, but they could be, we could appoint them to any board if they applied. There are certain boards that I think that are, that are really ones that I would like to be able to pay a little bit more attention or even talk to the people that might serve on that board to determine who the best person may be. But the fact that we, we've got a large list of people who could serve on up to three and, and, and theoretically, anybody could propose them for more, for me, doesn't give me, uh, maybe a little bit more time to check in and just interview these people of which that, you know, that part of attendance and those types of things. One thing I would like to, to, to maybe talk about or being able to put on the table is a way to, you know, to get a, get a consensus from council on, you know, who may be two or three people that you may be interested in, in serving on that, uh, so that we narrow it down from a wide field until some, to, to a more narrow field and, uh, uh, so that we, we know who we're considering, and if it's someone that I want to reach out to and say, hey, I, I want to talk, you know, planning and zoning is a really important committee, and I want to kind of, you know, talk with the people that are there instead of really, right, right now, one council member pretty much has a say, whoever the first one that makes the motion, and there's really not a, a chance for any input for those positions, uh, uh, to any others. So, uh, to the point of a, a council member nominating someone, I don't think I would necessarily want to take that away from a council member, but I'd want to put it on the front end, not the day of. In other words, if we have a list of people who apply, if a council member says before we, you know, before we get into that November 4th when we have the names, if council member wants to add someone to that list, then certainly, you know, I don't think we don't want to restrict a council member from doing that, but they need to go through the, the whole journey and process. So, I don't know if we necessarily need to say that we, you know, that it's a requirement to have an application, but that if a council member wants to put someone up, that there's a, that, that name gets in with the rest of the names and not brought in at the eleventh hour at the last minute, but...
I do like the buy-in though that comes from that individual having to go online, fill out the application, kind of check the box, sign it, send it in versus, you know, your mayor or a council member just putting a name down, because I think it's, it's more reciprocal that way, that, that you're getting more obligation from them. I don't necessarily have a problem, um, but I would, uh, with, with having a discussion prior to a nomination. So, I, I don't want to say that everybody gets to nominate and then we come back and figure out who we second. What I would say is, is, um, kind of the course of dealings that we could have amongst ourselves if we chose to would just be allowing a discussion, uh, of what every member is thinking prior to, uh, somebody making a nomination so that you don't just come out, you know, and say, I'm, I moved to nominate Mr. Path and so on and so forth. But there is a little gamesmanship, I think, in how that can be ran due to kind of the parliamentary behavior up here, and so, I don't know that I, I would mandate a discussion. I think that it could be written in as, as a courtesy, um, in, in working together as a council. What would you say to that, Ms. Coggins?
I think we could accommodate either of those. I will tell you, if, if we close off applications, but you have someone interested and you want to share their name with us, we can open applications back for that person and, and let them apply, let them go through, have a better understanding in their application of what they're applying for, as long as it's not day of a council meeting when we're about to make that appointment.
Well, I would say if any council member has an individual citizen that wants to, hopefully it's our, it's up to us to tell them, hey, I, 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 hopefully we've had that conversation before we just, uh, throw their name out. I think it, it would be up to us to tell them, you need to fill out an application, here's the link. So, I mean, I, I, I don't, I, I like the ability for a council member or mayor to throw somebody out, but I also like the fact that they need to go through the process of filling out the application, but I think that that falls on us if we choose to appoint somebody.
Well, I, I would go back, so I, I'm willing to acquiesce on that. I think that's not a, but, but I, I would like to come up with maybe a solution where we just have some direction on where we're heading, uh, because I, I, I do feel like, you know, these boards and commissions are some very important appointments for us and that, you know, we want to get good people, but I, I, I just feel particularly for some, for some, maybe not all of them, but for some that, that really are, are doing some very significant things that, that, you know, I kind of get an idea of where we're heading, so I can, you know, I, I, I just think, I think whatever way we, and I don't know whether the city manager has any comments or any experience on this, but, you know, I, I think the ability to kind of get an idea, engage who people may be supporting, uh, would just, would be beneficial to all of us and be a way for all of us to have into it necessarily than the system of whoever's the first to make a motion and, and a second.
Right, and I, I, I do think not to belabor it into multiple meetings, right? You're talking about two meetings, perhaps breaking the, the totality of the boards apart. I get that. What I, what I would hope is that we could direct staff is the potential courtesy of like discussion and then nomination. So, did we allow everybody to, to state where they're at, but still doing it within that meeting, not saying, well, we needed to come on the second and, and tell you what we're thinking, then we come back on the 16th to, to do the nomination, not, not wanting to add an additional meeting in, but at the same time, still try to appease.
Well, I do think there's a way to do that, not in a meeting, uh, and, and that is, you know, taking, taking the list and, and being able to provide some type of, you know, are there three people off this list that you would consider, uh, you know, for a, a particular board or commission? Uh, you know, if there's some consistency among the names on that list, then that may give another council member an idea of saying, you know, that one seems to have support, may not get it, may or may not get it, but that may be someone that I want to talk to and interview, particularly on, on key boards, uh, that, that, you know, that are very important to us.
You know, my only issue with that is I really like leaving each council member, you know, their autonomy and, and letting them, you know, make decisions that, that they see fit, and things do change, and, you know, somebody's willing to serve and then they're not, you know, the last day or something happens. And so, uh, not to tie council's hands, but to do as much in a gentleman's agreement as possible that allows...
I don't think it's tying anybody's hands, I'm just saying it helps, you know, get an idea of, of, you know, who, what, what each other is thinking and, and who may be the lead contenders on that. Again, I, I just think, you know, the, the way that it currently is, we show up, I mean, there's, there's, you know, uh, an opportunity, there's really no opportunity for me to know what you're thinking in advance or what anybody else is, not to say that be the person, but, you know, who are some people that seem to be strong contenders for this? And again, I just think as a council member, you know, I, I want to do more than just appoint someone with a name if, if there's, if there's, you know, a, a key board or commission and I say, I'd really want to know what these people think about this particular issue. I'd like to have a little bit of time to talk with them and interview, interview them before we're making a final decision. That, the, what we're talking about here would really, you know, we could bring it to the table and talk about it, but it doesn't really...
I think I've got a potential solution for that. Councilman Reed, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I, I'm trying to figure out this timeline. We give them eight weeks to put an application in, but we're given about a week and a half to review them and come up with a good decision on what person or persons we're going to put on a, a commission or board, um, and some of these are very important. We rely on their, their opinions, uh, when they, when they vote on things. So, is that timeline, is that something that traditionally we've just kept to, or is there, is there movement that we can make in there so that we as the council have more time to, to look at the, the applicants?
I think we have some options there, council member Reed. For those that may want it, we could provide applications as we get them and kind of keep an ongoing packet, if you will, maybe through like a OneDrive where we have a folder for each, uh, of the boards and you can go in there. And then, for those that want to look at it, once everything's final, we'd have that information two weeks before the, the meeting. It is a lot of information, and I know when we print the binder, because we, we've had anywhere from one hundred and fifty to, to two hundred applications, mind you, some of those people are applying for three boards. So, but yeah, we could, we could have some flexibility in that process to maybe provide that information earlier for council. If you wish to look at it earlier, you can start diving through it, and if you wish to wait, then we would have everything finalized early November. We could potentially start getting you a final packet even earlier than that. We just have to close applications earlier to give a little more time. So, we would close those applications. I will say our assistant city secretary, Johnny Glick, stays on top of them throughout the process, and so, we can turn around a packet pretty quick once we close them, and then it would just be adding in a few here and there. So, for example, if you had someone come up and you thought, okay, I want them to apply, we would work with them individually to get an application in and supplement your packet. Does that help?
It does.
Okay.
I think, uh, Mrs. Coggins, I think the two meetings actually is very helpful. I, I think if I'm gonna try to, to satisfy maybe Councilman Simpson as well as Councilman Reed, this December 9th, you had the extra, you know, two weeks and, and knowing that it comes up on the 18th, not every board is, is a board that you have multiple applicants that fit and you've got kind of the discussion, you know, the, the audit committee may have Dean Freego volunteering again for like the fortieth year, right? And he may be the only guy familiar with that level of financials and, and qualified, you know, to, to serve again. And so, those are going to go through, I think, on the front end. I think then what we could do is we could push and table any of those that, that come up, so we have the 9th to come back to. Now, that, that way, Councilman Simpson has the discussion that he needs before any nominations are made. So, perhaps we, we just direct it this way. We go to two meetings, um, we, we do a must-apply with a greater level of criteria, uh, we go ahead and do an, a attendance requirement so that that, that brings about a little bit more commitment from our citizenry that's volunteering. And then, we do the gentleman's agreement of, um, you know, after all discussion has taken place, then we allow the nomination, and if during the discussion it's, I'm not ready, I didn't get time, then we have the ability to kick it to the 9th.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on that?
We can make that work if that, if that sounds good to council. I would ask you on attendance requirements, do y'all, or am I hearing consensus that you would like something updated in the code to automatically remove someone or to have, like you said, maybe a warning period with a removal? Or would you like that to remain at the, at the pleasure of council in essence?
Yeah. Go ahead. Councilman?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think there needs to be some kind of grace given, so, I mean, there may be a reason why that happens, but I would just say, you know, if, if, and again, I'm just thinking it's gonna, it may take a while for seventy-five percent or, or that maybe they take, you know, but, but I just think that two consecutive meetings, it just, you know, may be a point at which a, a discussion would need to occur. I don't think that's, that's necessarily a council issue per se, but whoever the staff person is that works with that, just to say, hey, to make sure, hey, are you going to be able to attend the meetings or, you know, that type of thing? Because I, I, I do think it's not fair to other citizens who do volunteer their time, set the time aside, and then a quorum doesn't show up and it's, you know, it's exasperating for them, but, you know, but maybe, you know, just set something in motion to make sure that that person is able to, you know, to fulfill their obligation and attend the meetings.
Okay.
Well, I think we do need to know if quorum's not met. Like to Councilman Simpson's statement, I mean, if quorum's not met, then there's no attendance. Well, it's a problem, right? I mean, I would like, either the chairman of, whatever, the head of the board needs to be able to let us know somehow that these people showed up, these didn't.
And I think what we could do, because a lot of times that quorum is not met in advance, and so, the meeting doesn't even get posted.
Well, I would think that we would need to know that.
We could work with our board liaisons to make sure that, that, um, when that is happening and if they're seeing a recurring issue with not making quorum because people are unavailable, that, that they're bringing that up, that we're talking about it, talking to that person and making council aware of that, because you're right, that is as much you're right, that is as much an attendance issue as not making a posted meeting that there is a quorum for.
And is there a distinction between regular and special meetings? I, I know regular meetings, there's not, not as much of an excuse if you signed on ahead of time, knowing this is the expectation, but sometimes special meetings, they get called for whatever reason, last minute. And so a person may not, because they were on vacation or so forth, or a trip they weren't planning on. Is there, is there a distinction the council would like to set between regular versus special? Regular, obviously you, you, you signed up for this, you gotta be here. Whereas the special, there's a little bit more grace to that, or is it, or just one, we can have the same, we can have the same criteria applied to all of it if you, as, as well, but.
I mean, I'd say regular meetings. I mean, I don't think it's fair to hold a standard of special meeting. I mean, everybody has their lives, I get that, but I'd say regular meetings for sure.
Yeah. Hate for someone to, hate for someone to say a, a chairperson wants to get a person off the board, so they're gonna hold three special meetings and they know they can't be there. So.
That's true.
Counsel, I, I would ask if you did, um, seventy-five percent required attendance with a, you know, less than fifty percent, that means you're missing half of the work. Disqualification for being able to, to serve again. Doesn't remove you from the board, you're still on the board for, you know, the remaining term, sometimes that's three years. So you wouldn't be removed in that case. But then you would just know, uh, probably wasn't the right time or season for you to, to volunteer in that capacity. Do you guys like that? Is that, can that be improved upon? Less than fifty percent disqualification for, uh, you know, applying, uh, continuing, and then, uh, seventy-five percent, you know, required attendance. That way it's coming to council that you're not, you're not serving. Anywhere between the fifty and the seventy-five though, there's no, there's no teeth in that.
You, you could have like a, you're, you're, you're not eligible for two years kind of a thing. So it's not indefinitely, but you know, you, you can't, you can't apply this next time around because you proved to us you can't be here this next year. How do you know we're gonna be here this next year?
Yeah. Is that, is that good enough direction for now, guys? You want to let them draw it up and bring it back, or you want to tweak that?
Again, I, I would, I would like to maybe ask you to consider and come back and see whether you think the consecutive absences would be something. I mean, I'm not saying, uh, you're off, but just something to bring the attention. Because again, if you're only meeting four times a year and you miss the first two, well, you're already not going to make fifty percent, but it's just showing up consistently. I can understand maybe one, have one, something happens at one meeting, but I, I'll just leave it to staff to come back to whatever you think.
We can look at a few options there. And of course, please give us feedback between now and the next time we talk about this. And another thing too is, um, we, we could, as staff, we could give you like a, a monthly report as to boards, when they, when they met, they didn't meet. And we can work with staff to see about, hey, why didn't the board meet? And so we can give that input from my, my department heads about, what was the quorum issue? And then if you like, we can get names for that. And so that way you start, you start monthly, instead of six months or a year, you start seeing that as, as happening. So we, we could, we could commit to that.
One other additional thing that I would like is, um, and I may be the only one, but uh, would staff recommend sunsetting any of these boards or combining them? And so if we had multiple boards that, you know, the, this board was meeting once a month and now they've drawn back to once a quarter, and even on a quarterly, there's not enough business to justify a meeting. So you're meeting, you know, twice a year, whatever you feel minimal, just to get budgets and recommendations out. Could we combine any of those and streamline those? Cause they're similar.
We can take, we can take a look at that. Some are, most of our boards are required, PIDs, TERS, P and Z, Board of Adjustment, those are required, but we could take a look. I'm not aware, but I, I'd have to look at the list again and see if there's already that we could probably combine or so.
Let me just throw up one other thing before, before we maybe leave this, or maybe there's, there's something else. But, uh, so just from a timetable standpoint, let's say we, we, instead of October twenty-seventh, we said October ninth or something, that, that's a month application period. My, my question would be, um, again, to make more productive of the use, what would, what be, and you, Mr. City Manager can tell me whether is, if there's any legalities of this, but say we were, we were able to look at that and that each of us took a look at that list. And instead of waiting until November eighteenth to, for the first time that anybody ever talks about anything, that, uh, you know, is it the possibility that each council member could give maybe three names they're considering for that? Uh, you know, can that be shared with, uh, each council member? Uh, could then, you know, I mean, and I'm assuming it'd be a public document that'd be had to share, but the public. I just wonder if that would allow us to, to do, again, if there, if, if I have a consensus that, hey, this person or this person, or maybe I don't have a dog in the hunt, or, you know, I don't really have anybody, but I see some consensus is coming from the council, maybe on one or two other people. Then instead of me having to show up and say, no, I, I'm not ready to approve that, that there's some type of process between when we get that and when we first meet to be able to, is that, is that a reality? Can, is that something?
I think I'd hesitate, I think I'd be facilitating conversation between council members. And so, um, I think that'd be my concern there. I, I think it'd be better to brought those names to the meeting and publicly discuss it there. I, I, I'm afraid I'd, I'd be, I'd be helping facilitate a walk-in quorum, I think, by sharing, Councilor Simpson wants these three, Mayor Sandy wants these three, Don just wants these three. So I think that could be a concern.
But what if it was something, of course, we haven't used it in quite some time. I mean, if we, if we felt that, that the discussion board or something like that, I mean, that we are not facilitating that, is that an option?
Let, let, let me get back to you on that. So, yeah, so, yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Coggins, anything further on this guy?
I might real quick, add real quick, um, I know the, I know today's technology virtual is a nice thing. I, I would like to encourage the council to consider making more requirement that people show up for the meetings, attendance. And so I think there's some, some that you can lose by not being physically at the meeting, the citizens, the developers, the, the applicants, when they can't actually see the person in front of them that, and then vice versa. I, I would encourage, we can still look at virtual as a fallback, but I'd like, I'd, I'd like to recommend that we always prefer in-person, uh, as much as possible.
Okay. Mr. City Secretary, you got what you need?
I do. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for the presentation.
On, on the timetable, did we agree on what we're gonna do or what that's gonna look like?
Well, let's revisit that, actually. Do you want to back that up to October ninth to close out applications? Give our citizens a month?
What do you typically see on applications? Is it right when they open? Do you see them trickle in?
Most of them are on the front end. We get more when we open than we do towards the close. And again, we'll be flexible. So if someone comes up after the fact and says, wait, I didn't get to apply, like we can supplement you with, with some applications. We're not ever gonna tell anyone, no, you can't. We, we're gonna work with them. So, um, in the past, we actually, back when we did this in the first meeting in November, the first time, I think we opened applications mid-September, closed them mid-October. So we've done a thirty-day window before. And so if council, if that, you feel that gives you more time, we could close applications on October ninth. And then we would have you packets ready around October fifteenth to start thinking through. And that would give you a whole month in advance of that November meeting.
Yeah. And here's a consideration, you could leave the applicants open all year. And then, um, when they come up on September ninth, I'm sure we can automate it where it, it contacts all of those individuals that have already applied. Um, hey, applications are now open for you to specify or update any of your information. And then that way you've got plenty of people that, I mean, you may have somebody who really wants to serve, you know, and they, they thought about it in June and then they forgot about it in September. So if you want to close it that quick, but you're willing to reopen it, I think, why don't we just leave it open? Um, with the November eighteenth recommendations closing on October ninth.
Okay.
So you really would only close the applications from the ninth, assuming everybody had all year to apply, up until the December vote, and then they'd be open again.
So what I'm hearing is go ahead and leave them open year-round, let people apply when they want to. And then we can reach out, for example, if it's been more than thirty days and they have an application out there, we could reach out.
I think that that's the easiest in us trying to, um, be involved with citizens and saying, hey, you really have a passion about parks, I'd love for you to apply. Well, I waited too long and didn't realize it was open. I didn't fulfill my obligation to remember to talk to that person. So I'd like to be able to direct them, go ahead and apply now. And then that way you're in the pool whenever it comes up.
Okay.
Is that a, is that good for everyone?
Yeah, I like that.
We can do that. And one more point on that, I know we talked about, they can apply for up to three boards. That is just, that's a practice we've always done. We can change that if you want them to be able to apply for less or more. We can do that. We've always just let them select three, because if they can't get plugged in on one board, hopefully they can get plugged in on another. So we've wanted to give them the opportunity to have a few options. But if, if council wants us to go a different route on that, we can make a change there as well.
I, I'd say the only other thing, and I, I don't know how we can do this or encourage this, but whatever way that we, the more information that we get as council, the better. Uh, you know, sometimes someone will submit something and it's, the, the one sentence says, I love Amarillo, want to make it a better place. And I'm sure that is true. But, but from our perspective, I mean, the more information that we get about their interest in this subject matter, their expertise, I think it just helps us get a better idea of, you know, not that we don't want all people to help, but if you're, if you're applying for a certain area, you know, first we're gonna be looking for, so whatever we can do to encourage people to really give us a comprehensive response so that we can get information to, you know, to be able to learn a lot about, more about that person.
And I will, and I'm gonna skip this forward one slide. People can go online to apply on our website. If they have problems, they can call our office. And on the application, our phone number, our email is on there. But one thing we've done this year, Councilman Simpson, that I think will achieve what you're looking for is we've added some board-specific questions. So for example, if they're applying for the condemnation appeals commission, that requires you to be in one of nine different trades. Um, and so we have that list in there and say, you know, our, our municipal code requires you to be an architect or an engineer or, um, a construction professional. And they, and then we say, which one of these do you qualify for? And they can go in and check that box. So we'll have some of that. We are also adding in, because you're right, we do have that, why are you interested in serving on a board in ninety percent of the time? It's because I love Amarillo, I want to do better. And, um, we've added some questions in on, give us your education, experience, community activity. And we've added a question that says of the boards you've applied for, what makes you qualified to serve on these boards? And so hopefully that'll help. If there's other questions council would like on there to gather other information, please send those and we will update that application and make sure that, that it's thorough to give y'all a better glimpse of, of who's applying and, and what kind of fit they would be for the boards.
And the, one other thing I would say is, you know, and I don't know what our communication pattern is with the applicants. But I wouldn't mind just saying, okay, how do we communicate with everybody through the process? In other words, it may be over-communicating. So let them know, you know, even if things, the applications are closed today, here's the timetable, you know, to let them know the meeting at which it will be considered. I mean, and then let them know when we've completed it. So I don't know what that looks like, but, but that would be something I'd just be interested in kind of seeing. Are, are we communicating frequently and do the people who apply kind of know where we are, what's going on?
I know we communicate with them when we receive their application, but I think there's probably some areas for improvement to touch base with them along the way. And so we'll take that feedback and we'll come up with some communication and, and make sure they know, um, when it's being considered, what, what point of the process they're in and make sure that they know we're here to help answer questions if they have them along the way as well.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Cause I had some people came back and said, I applied. And they know they applied, but they either never, they thought they never heard again. Of course emails can go anywhere, but, but I do think that communication, so all these people that are interested in serving kind of know where we are on the process, we, we, when we've completed it and, you know, how that's worked.
Yeah. Let us look at a communication plan to maybe better, uh, fill that in and make sure that they are aware at all steps of the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey Stephanie, is there a place that citizens can go to, like if they're interested in a board, that they can click on it and it will tell them what, I mean, what the requirements are, how often they meet, or what it's about?
I don't know that there's a specific one at this point in time. Now, this website that we use for applications, Councilmember Tips, has that ability. And so let us work on a link and see if we can plug that into our website. And, um, I'll work with OEI on that and make sure.
I think that'd be helpful. So, so the people at least know
Yeah.
what is it about, how often does it meet?
We have a board and commission page out there that's very generic on, here's your requirements, here is a list of the boards. But we could get that information out there by board and make sure that we share that. Um, we also do invite them and please, if you talk to anybody interested in a specific board, please connect them with the city secretary's office. Because what we'll do is get them in contact with the board liaison, where they can ask questions on meeting dates and times, and also on like, what does this board do? What, what is the commitment?
Yeah.
So if they want to fill that ahead of time, we want to make sure that, that they sign up fully aware of, of what that looks like.
I think most people would probably be more self-sufficient. They probably don't want to call, they don't want to do that, but if they had a place to click, I think that'd be good.
Yeah. Let us make sure that information is out there and available.
Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate the discussion. Thank you, Mrs. Coggins. Um, we're gonna drive through here on, uh, discussion and then we'll take a recess, come back for our non-consent. Um, our last item here, um, for an actual discussion is eight D Canadian River Municipal Water Authority update. Uh, Mr. Hooper, are you gonna take us through that?
Yeah, I'll introduce it. Uh, we have a couple of, uh, great guests here with us today. I'll talk about, we're gonna, we actually got this first request from council to get an update on the Canadian River Municipal Authority and what they were doing. Uh, what, what, uh, projects they had and a little bit better understanding of just what they are all about. So Floyd and I have been working with Cremaux for many, many years, a couple of decades probably, and uh, very excited to bring up a couple of, uh, great experts, not only in water, but in the system that they operate as well. You know, Cremaux operates, uh, for eleven-member cities. And they provide, uh, the, uh, water for them. They're a not-for-profit, not-for-profit organization, but they actually just provide those services to deliver the water to us. So they'll give you more information on that, but we have Drew Satterwhite. If Drew would go ahead and make his way up here. He's the general manager for the Canadian River Municipal Water, Municipal Water Authority. Boy, I'm having a hard time saying that today. And then we also have Chad Parnell here as well, the deputy director. So turn it over to you.
All right. Good deal. Mayor, Council, appreciate you guys having me out today. Um, I'm gonna try to give you a high-level overview of Cremaux. Um, there's a lot of information that I'm cramming into these slides, so you guys feel free at any point to interrupt me before we move on to a completely different topic here. So Cremaux, we are a political subdivision of the state. Uh, we were created in nineteen fifty-three, um, at the request of our member cities, Amarillo being one of the, our founding cities in fifty-three. We, as Donnie said, we're governed by a board that is appointed by our eleven-member cities. Um, if your city has over ten thousand population, you appoint two board members. And if you're less than that, you appoint one more member. And so in total, we have seventeen board members. Uh, two, obviously from Amarillo, we have Rory Ureta and Johnny Mize are the representatives from the city of Amarillo. So I forgot my glasses here today, but, uh, this is, this is a timeline of kind of some of the significant events in, in Cremaux's history here. So the concept of, of Lake Meredith, which is really what spurred our creation, uh, you know, seeking that as a water supply for our member cities. Those studies started back in the nineteen forties. Uh, in nineteen fifty-three, as I mentioned, we were created by the state legislature. Um, in that period of time, between fifty-three and sixty, uh, we were hammering out member city contracts with all of our member cities. Um, eventually in nineteen sixty, we signed a contract with the Bureau of Reclamation um, to fund, finance, and ultimately construct Lake Meredith and what we call our Canadian River Project, which I'll talk about again here in just a second. Um, began construction on the dam and aqueduct in nineteen sixty-two. The dam was completed in nineteen sixty-five and began impounding water. And, uh, aqueduct and all was completed in nineteen sixty-eight. And that was the first year that we began delivering water. So fast forward to two thousand and one, you know, prior to the lake even being built. We knew that chlorides salt was going to be an issue. And so, um, i- if you look back at a trend, I'll show you a trend here in a minute, but essentially the chlorides in the lake are continuing to, to climb. Um, the trend is upward. And so in two thousand and one, Cremaux built our, uh, what we call the John C. Williams Well Field. And the, the purpose of that was to blend the well water with the lake water to reduce the chlorides to the level that the TCQ, um, their, their secondary standard of three hundred parts per million chlorides. This is, it's not a, a health-based standard. As I said, it's a secondary standard, taste and aesthetic issue, EPA doesn't enforce it. But we, we completed the first phase of that well field and pipeline in two thousand and one. Again, on the chloride issue, that same year, we started our salinity control project up. And what this is, is it's a a project in New Mexico, just downstream of the Yoot Dam. We have seven wells that are approximately a hundred and twenty feet deep that we're intercepting Artesian Rhine Aquifer water that's coming up into the river alluvium. We're intercepting that and then we're deep well injecting it a little over three thousand feet deep in an effort to prevent that salty, very salty water from making its way to Meredith. So two thousand and one, coincidentally, was the beginning of a twenty-plus-year mega drought, similar to what you've seen in the West, you know, the Colorado River Basin and all that. Um, and so the, the lake just started a downward trend at that point. Inflows to the lake and, and water levels in the lake started that downward trend. In two thousand and eleven, we expanded the well field, doubled the capacity and essentially filled up our aqueduct from out in Roberts County there north of Pampa. And we, we put the well capacity in to fill that pipeline up to, to maximize it. Twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, um, those were the two years that we had with no lake whatsoever. And those were difficult times for our member cities. I was not here at the time, but heard a lot of stories. It was difficult times, um, without that water supply. So what you're seeing here, this is the Canadian River Project. Again, this goes back to that, that, the sixties. Um, that, the Canadian River Project essentially is the Sanford Dam that impounded Lake Meredith and then the three hundred and twenty-two miles of aqueduct to deliver that water out to our eleven-member cities across the Panhandle and High Plains. Um, this, this system ranges from ninety-six inch diameter pipe down to sixteen inch diameter pipe. Once you get down to the southern extent of the system, Lamese area, the, the pipe starts getting quite a bit smaller. So real quick, what I'm gonna do here is I'm gonna zoom in to the northern part of our system to kind of show you. So real quick, what I'm going to do here is I'm going to zoom in to the northern part of our system to kind of show you the, the groundwater addition. And so what you're seeing here, that, that dark blue area, those are the groundwater rights that Cremaul owns on behalf of our member cities. We have 456,000 surface acres of, of water rights that, that we procured over the course of two or three decades. So you'll see there on the left, that phase one and two, that well field, that cluster of wells, that was our original 2001 well field. Then the pipeline from there going over toward the lake, you can see there where it intersects our original aqueduct. And that's where the, the water is currently blended in 2011. On the east side or on the right side of your screen there, that's our, that was our well field expansion where we doubled the capacity. And so in total, right now, we have 47 wells. The groundwater system has 48 miles of 54-inch pipe, bringing that over to the 70-inch, or 72-inch. And that can bring 65 MGD of groundwater to our member cities. So what you're seeing here, this is a historical trend of the water that we've provided to the member cities in addition to what the cities have supplemented with their own sources. And so you can see there on the very left, that's when the, the dam was completed in 68 there. That's when we first began delivering lake water. And you can see there for the first 30 or so years, 100%, of Cremaul's deliveries were, were Lake Meredith water. And then you can see, well, I'll talk about chlorides again here in a minute, but you'll see there in 2001 where, where the, the Cremaul wells bars come into play. And that's where we began supplementing with, with groundwater resources. And then you can also see that, you know, because of the drought, because of the declining water quantity, but more importantly, the water quality, we got down during 2012, 2013 where there was no lake water that we were able to deliver to the cities. And we, we've somewhat recovered since then, but, but water quality is an issue and will likely to remain to be so. So little bit about, little bit about Lake Meredith, you know, this, while everybody, you know, or a lot of people, I mean, it's a, it's a popular recreation spot up here in the Panhandle. But this lake was built, you know, the, the funding from that came from our member cities to fund this, fund the dam as a water supply. And we delivered over 900 billion gallons from Lake Meredith since it was built. And, you know, that water is renewable and otherwise would have come from what we consider to be an honorable source, being the Ogallala Aquifer. So what you're seeing here is that the historical inflow to Meredith, and you can see there over the first 35 years or so that the dam was in place, our inflow to the lake was about 130,000 acre feet per year. And then you go to 2001 where we set a record low inflow. And from 2001 through 2024, our inflow has dropped more than half on average down to 55,000 acre feet. And you can see there, 2001, we set a record low inflow, broke that record the next year, broke it again the next year. And there's been multiple records set since 2001 and a lot of those other years that weren't records would have been, had it not been for that period of time. Here's the depths of Lake Meredith historically. You can see how quickly when the dam was built that it filled up. We got up to almost 102 in 1973. Then you can again see that 2001 timeframe where the lake just began dropping. We got down to 26 feet there. And there was a period of time where we had a temporary pump station actually lifting water up into the intake structure, trying to get everything we could out of it until the point that it just made no sense anymore. As you can see there, we've recovered. This is, this slide's two months out of date. Right now, we're actually at 80.3 feet, which is the highest we've been since 2001, which is a good thing. But obviously the quality still remains an issue. This is 2010 forward chloride concentrations in the lake. And again, that 300 parts per million is what we are trying to blend down to, to meet that secondary standard of TCQ. But if you go, if you were to go back and look at 65, there's just a, a general trend up. And the thing is, is up here, we have a lot of evaporation. We get a lot of sun, a lot of wind, heat. And, you know, the, the evaporation takes all of the good stuff, the water, and leaves behind the minerals. And, and we have never released from Lake Meredith, which is fairly unique for a Texas lake. And so these minerals just continue to accumulate. And the only way we get rid of those minerals is to pump them out or release. And so far, and since the 60, since 68, it hasn't been an option. So the more of the lake water we use, the more we're prolonging the use of that resource while also preserving the, the groundwater in place. So for some dramatic effect, for those of you that are familiar with Lake Meredith, this is at Harbor Bay. We're looking north from Harbor Bay. So in 1999, about 95 feet in depth at that point. 2011, we were at about 30. We got lower than that, but it doesn't really matter for this picture's purpose. You can't see the water in the 2011 anyway. So it, it can change relatively quickly. So Cremaul II, this is a, a concept that has been discussed since about 2012, I believe, the first time it was introduced to the board. We, we had member city meetings. Again, I say we, I was not a part of those meetings, but there's, there's board records of it and all that. We began talking with the member cities about this in 2014. And at that time, we had just got through two years of no lake. And at that point, we had just a little bit of lake. And, and all of our member cities were saying, we need Cremaul II by 2025 or sooner. Well, again, going back to that graph, you saw what started happening to the lake and it started refilling. And so it kind of eased the pressure a little bit on going forward. But we are back to having those discussions with our member cities, trying to get a feel for when, when are you going to need more water supply from us? We've had firm yield studies done on the lake that are telling us that the lake will get back to the point, you know, for at least a, a year or two at a time, that you are not going to have any water to pull from it. So we have an obligation to our cities to make sure that you guys know and understand that that, that risk exists. And so what this pipeline would do, this is approximately 70-mile pipeline. The size is still yet to be determined. Floyd 72 is kind of what's been discussed, the 72-inch diameter pipeline for the last decade or so. But what this would do is, is add more groundwater to the system and allow us to completely fill up our original aqueduct that was built in the 60s with groundwater, essentially a, a drought-proof supply. What that would also do is give us more groundwater to, to blend with the surface water, with, with Lake Meredith water. So us, you know, it just adds the ability to continue to utilize that resource. But another thing that it does is, is you can see there, it, we have what we call our Amarillo Regulating Reservoir, which is up there on 136th and 24th Street. That's the, the high point of our system that we, we lift the water to from Lake Meredith. And, and so what this does is it essentially bypasses our original aqueduct and, and provides quite a bit of redundancy, certainly for the city of Amarillo in that water supply. Because we, between the dam and Lake Meredith, you can see there where that groundwater line comes in. 100% of the water that we deliver to the city of Amarillo, which is not 100% of your water, granted. But that goes through a, you know, approaching 60-year-old pipe. It's, it's pre-stressed, non-cylinder pipe. It was made specifically for the Bureau of Reclamation back in the 60s. And we are only aware of three other, or two other entities in the country that have it. And there's a reason why there's not been a lot more since the 60s. They're not, they're not making this stuff anymore. And this pipe, these are 40,000-pound joints of pipe. You know, they can be buried 15-plus feet deep. And, you know, if, if this pipe usually, usually does not leak, it blows out. And there's no warning. It's just, hey, Amarillo, hey, all the cities, hey, we're out of water here for a little bit. And, and I say for a little bit, you know, we have, it takes two days to de-water this pipeline safely. Then we've got to get in there and replace a 40,000-pound joint of pipe that, you know, Trac-O lift it out or a standard Trac-O isn't going to pull that thing out. And so it's, you know, a 10-day process. We, we do have terminal storage up there in Amarillo that, you know, provides some relief. But, you know, it, it's a concern of ours and, and I believe the city staff would, would tell you the same thing. But we're doing everything we can to prolong the use of it, but it doesn't change the fact that it's 60-year-old pipe and you're relying on the steel structure that's buried under the ground with water in it. So touching a little bit on the allocations here. So the lake allocation, Amarillo has 37% of the lake allocation and the aqueduct capacity associated with that. 40% of the ground, or 40.6% of the groundwater production or allocation, I'm sorry. And so our wells, our, our well system's capable of delivering 65 million gallons a day. And that is pretty set in stone. I mean, we're, we, we are constant, and I say constantly, we're, every few years, we are adding wells to, to make sure that our production capacity exceeds our pipeline capacity. Because there's always going to be issues when you have pumps and motors and electrical equipment several hundred feet below the ground. So we want to make sure we have plenty of capacity available. So that 65 MGD, I mean, we can almost guarantee that short of an infrastructure failure or leak or something like that. But the lake there is the wild card. And you can see this year, on a peak day, our board has authorized 23 MGD of the lake to supplement that 65 MGE for delivery to our cities. And Amarillo's portion of that is, is 8.52. But while we have that 23 highlighted is because that is an annual decision that's made by our board of directors. And we're obviously coordinating with city staff in many cases to come up with this. But, you know, that number fluctuates and we're told that that will be zero in some years, or at least we need to plan for that in some years. But in total, 88 MGD is what we're, our peak delivery capacity is right now. And that's not an infrastructure issue, that's a, a supply issue. And so Donnie asked me to touch a little bit on our accounting here. I'm an engineer, so don't hold, hold too much of it against me in my explanations here. But just want you guys to understand, you know, we are a, a not-for-profit entity. You know, if, if we make extra money, we send it back at the end of the year. And so for instance, I, I don't know if you can see, it's not showing up very good here. But so cost code six, that's right there, right there in the middle at Amarillo. And that's, that's associated with your delivery point to your water treatment plant. But if we have, if we are spending time, materials, money, whatever, on cost code seven south of Amarillo, Amarillo has, one, you, you have no financial obligation. You're not paying for anything that happens south of Amarillo. You, you are only paying for stuff that, that directly benefits the city of Amarillo. And this was established back in the 70s with some, you know, I don't know how, there was some consternation about it, let's just say that. But this has been along in place for quite a while and it, it's fair. I mean, I think Lamesa might wish that we just charged a water rate and all of our cities paid the same, same amount per thousand gallons. But that's not the way we are set up. You, you pay based upon your, your allocation and your usage from that year. So anything that happens north of there, if it's between the lake and Amarillo, chances are it's Amarillo and the other cities south that are, that are paying for any improvements or time or maintenance or whatever that's occurring there. So as far as budgeting and billing, we, we adopt a budget in April of each year. We begin that process in January, February, start with our committee meetings. But we try to get our budget adopted in April so that we can have it to all of our cities so that you can plan accordingly as you go through your budgeting processes for the next fiscal year as well. We also operate on an October 1 to September 30 budget year. But we have three components to our budget. One is electricity. And we do provide each city with an estimate of what we expect you to use in electricity or what we expect your electricity contributions to be for that next year. We are projecting what the power providers are going to be charging that next year. And also looking back at your last five years' usage and correlating those two and saying, hey, here's what we think it may be. But your, the actual bills that we send you at the end of each month are what you really used. And so if you used 30% of the flow that moved through one of our pump stations, you're going to pay for 30% of that bill that moved through that pump station that month, if that makes sense. Now debt service, that's another component and it's a relatively large component right now. That's 13 million right now, but that is, you know, barring any additional debt, goes to zero by, I think, 2030, 31 would be the last year that we have a debt payment. But it, it continues to decline over that period of time. And those are, you know, I, I say it's fixed, but I mean, it's, it's fixed after the, the debt is encumbered, let's say that. And O and M is really where we spend most of our time in the budgeting process. That accounts for about a third of our budget. And, and basically what we're doing there is we're, we're looking back at your last five years of utilization of, of Cremaul. We're looking at where are we expecting our projects and our money to be spent over the next year? And does that fall in a cost code that you're responsible for? And if we are, if it does, what's your percentage of that? And then with that process, we come up with an estimated annual billing for each city. And so whatever that estimated amount is, we send the cities a bill for 1/12 of that amount over the course of the year. And then at the end of the year, when the cost, you know, maybe we had 10 leaks south of Amarillo that year and we spent all our time down there. Chances are, you're going to be getting a refund that year because we, we didn't know exactly where we were going to be using our resources. But there are instances where, you know, you may have to, we call it a true-up, that you may have to send in extra to make up for that difference. I could go on all day, but I was trying to be respectful of y'all's time. I have some extra slides if there's further questions on anything in particular.
No, sir. We think that's pretty good overall, pretty comprehensive. Council, you have questions?
A couple of questions. When we look at the water supply here and what you oversee, what are, what are the threats to that? What, what down the road should we be concerned about or what kind of threats do we want to make sure that we don't encumber?
Well, so from our, so we have, we have 456,000 acres. I don't know how much Amarillo has in the 200s outside of Cremaul. So you, you have 40% share of really what we have. I mean, I don't know that you say you own it, but I kind of look at it like you do. I mean, we're stewarding a resource for all of our cities. And so we pump about 13% of our permitted volume from Panhandle GCD. So we're well below the threshold of what we are, are able to pump. And we've recently had some, some modeling done. And we are projecting usage out for 100 years. And I probably don't have to tell you all, I mean, it gets pretty fuzzy when you get out to 9100 years. And we're trying to project, you know, what all industry is going to be here. I mean, it's, it gets pretty fuzzy. But we've done those calculations and our modeling shows that in 100 years, we'll have anywhere from 62 to 71% of what we have today remaining at that point. And so I would, as crazy as this sounds, we live in a semi-arid area. Some might call it the desert. I wouldn't quite go that far, but, you know, we are very, very water secure. And, you know, with what Cremaul has on our member cities behalf and what you guys have, I mean, I feel like, you know, we're all in pretty good shape. And because we have such a large area secured in water rights, you know, we're also protected from infringement of neighboring pumping by quite a bit. So I, I mean, the lake, Lake Meredith is always, obviously a concern. I mean, just because of the chlorides and the diminishing usability of that. But I feel like we're in a very water secure situation up here, at least as far as the city of Amarillo is concerned. Do you agree with that Floyd? Donnie?
The only thing I would add to that, Councilmember, is the redundancy component. And that's in that Cremaul II pipeline, that redundancy with that old infrastructure, aged infrastructure is always a challenge. And that is a big component of that plan.
What about, in, in comparison, you say we're in pretty good shape from water security. How, how does that compare to other areas of the state? Or is there comparison for your equals in other parts of the state?
Yeah, I remember when I was interviewing for this job and I was coming from DFW. I grew up here, but I, I came back, I was down there for about 15 years. But one of the board members asked, what do you know about drought? You know, you've been in the water business then. But, but it's different because, you know, down there, you know, you're relying on surface water almost 100%. So if it stops raining, you're, you're in a bind. Whereas here with the groundwater, now granted, we are producing it faster than it's recharging by a pretty healthy clip. But, I mean, looking, you know, 100-plus years down the road, we're in really good shape from a resiliency standpoint, from the supply anyway. I don't know if I answered your question. I may have went off into left field there.
Well, I, I just know I was reading your recent articles of, of, you know, the great development that is in the DFW area, in North Texas. And one of their major concerns is water and being able to handle that. But it just, you know, I just get a gauge for, I mean, right now, that water is for, for us. But it seems like it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty valuable commodity that we, that we have here that, that others don't have the luxury of having, or at least the security of it.
Absolutely, yeah. You know, maybe one thing that's keeping it up here is the cost of infrastructure to get it there. But, but you're absolutely right. I mean, we've, we feel like we're in a really good spot for the long term as far as a water supply perspective. But, you know, there's going to be a time where we have to figure out how to get that water that we have in the ground to town. And it, it won't be a cheap process to do it. But I assume that at some point it will be a necessity.
Right. And then the city and Cremaul are the only entities that have wells, water wells of significance in the Panhandle?
No, sir. Really every, every city that I'm aware of in the Panhandle, I'm trying to make sure I don't misspeak. But I, I think every city that I'm aware of relies upon groundwater for their sole source. Now Lubbock, they actually have Lake Allen Henry, where they get a percentage of their water supply from that. But, but other than that, it's, groundwater is the supply. But again, because we have such a large area out in an area, you know, in a county with less than 1,000 people where there's not a lot of irrigated agriculture and things of that nature to compete for that water with us, we, we feel pretty good about our situation.
And you said Cremaul's MGD is, ranges from 65 to 88?
Yes, sir. 65 is what we can, what we can tell you that, I can tell you in 15 years, we'll be able to get you 65 MGD as long as we keep up with, with our well field. But if the lake, I can't tell you what it'll be in 10 years, you know. And so the, the lake is just kind of the variable. So we could, if the lake was gone, we could get 65 MGD and you would get 40% of that, 40.6% of that or whatever it is. But the, the lake ebbs and flows and the water quality, water quality is really what's, what's dictating our deliveries right now and has been for quite a while.
And what on the city side, what is our range of million per day?
So yearly, on an annual average, we, we're just under 50 million gallons per day on current demand. On a summer day, we average about 64 and on a winter day, it's 30. On a summer day, we average about sixty-four, and on a winter day, it's thirty.
Thank you.
So let me ask you, I'm sure in your forecast, I mean, you figure industry and that type deal. So as big industry comes online, if there are, you know, five MGD or ten MGD, I mean, that's figured in your forecast moving forward, yes?
Yes, and I will say that, you know, we rely heavily upon our cities to give us what they're demanding. We know what we know. I know a lot less after it passes that meter and goes to the city. I mean, we try our best to keep up with what's going on everywhere. But our forecasts are primarily coming from the cities as far as what projected demand would be. But, but yeah, I mean, we're, I think, five or ten G, five or ten MGD does not give me heartburn, you know, in the overall scheme of things. I mean, you know, municipal, industrial, and all that, you know, that accounts for less than ten percent of the water used up in this part of the world. I mean, anyway.
Not a problem. So, I mean, somebody like Fermi that's coming in, right, it's going to be a huge water user, you know, and that's what they're going to require. So something like that, which is pretty big, that's built into the forecast. I mean, granted, I don't think we'll have a lot of those, but that's built into your models.
Well, I will say that our models aren't forecasting that that demand will come from our cities or from Cremona, for what it's worth. But I would not, it does not scare me for our assets in particular, our assets meaning our groundwater in place out in Roberts County, the thought of that, really. I mean, because like I said, we're far away, and we're isolated with how many, the territory that our water rights cover, that nobody else can go in there. I mean, the folks that own the land, they can come in and put a windmill or a domestic water well, but they're not going to put a housing development or start, you know, put in a center pivot or something like that.
Okay.
So it's not alarming to me, no, sir.
Okay, and so our use rate is already above the recharge rate, right? I mean, so we're using a lot more than our aquifers are charging. So as that increases, I mean, that just, that gap gets bigger and bigger?
Yes.
But that, again, that's all.
And, you know, a lot of that depends on, you know, where an industry like that gets their water. I mean, are they going and buying out, you know, irrigated farmland? And that's, you know, you're essentially just replacing the usage that was producing up to the permitted limit potentially? I mean, or is it going to be added usage or replace existing usage? I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that's fair.
If I did, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, you did. Thank you. Can I ask one follow-up question, too?
Sure, go right ahead.
So does each municipality make the water potable? I mean, are you, what are you, are you providing potable or non-potable water?
Good question. So we are providing raw water. And so Borger, Pampa, Amarillo, Plainview, and Lubbock all have treatment facilities. When we, our water going to Lubbock, Lubbock treats all of their water, and then they treat water for the six cities to the south and west of them. So they basically treat it, we pick it up on the back end of their water plant and continue our delivery on down to those cities.
So it's the municipalities that you don't provide those services?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So a couple of things, I think, in making sure we're saying it correctly and hearing it correctly. You know, on Cremona Two, when you bring that in and you put that online, because you would move those well fields and start piping them forward, would that increase the recharge capability of that aquifer because you would allow for more water to flow into that duct?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I mean, so for instance, if we're, I know this wasn't your question, but if we produced up to the permitted volume that we're allowed to, we'd be declining six feet of water table per year. Recharge is about a quarter inch, and I don't remember, two-hundred-plus times the amount, I mean.
But the recharge capacity doesn't have anything to do with available volume that would move out of that particular area?
I don't think so. I mean, it's a hundreds, if not thousands, of-year journey from that water from the time it hits the surface to make it down to the water table. And maybe there was a point in time where that would have been the case, when everything was brimful before we had the technology that we have. But at this phase, I don't believe so, and y'all can disagree with me.
The recharge is a minimal component of the water supply, and it's calculated over years.
And just to stay kind of on the business side and the topic, you know, we're paying into Cremona for M and O and our utility bills. Are we still looking at water rights and investments into Cremona as a member? Has all of that already taken place, and the membership is kind of static, so to speak?
So I don't want to say never here, but I think the philosophy amongst, you know, Cremona and our board has been that, you know, we have water rights for a long period of time, and that the next dollars that we spend should probably be focused on the infrastructure to get what we have to town versus continuing to buy more water.
Okay, so our cost that's paid into Cremona annually is all for ongoing business and maintenance, so to speak, maintenance and operations. We're not currently investing in Cremona in order to go and pay into a fund for future infrastructure or to buy water rights?
That's correct, with the exception being that we still have two outstanding debt issuances that were used for funding water right acquisitions back in two thousand and ten-ish timeframe.
And then everything that you had on the chart for available MGDs, that share in the way that that's shared out, that's a maximum capacity that we can draw out. You've got every member listed in there. So are there other entities that can buy water from Cremona? Is it all held within the eleven member cities? And if there was an entity like Councilman Tips is mentioning, does that come out of your allotment but through a member city?
So traditionally, the way Cremona has functioned is that we sell the water to the city, and if the city wants to sell it to an industry, that they facilitate that, not us. I mean, it's possible that we could, you know, provide a cap on a line or something like that that would come out of, say, Amarillo's allocation, or if there was a big enough industry, then it could potentially come out of everybody's. If it was, you know, if all the member cities stood the benefit and everybody agreed, then it's possible.
That would need to be approved by the eleven-member-city board?
Yes.
So all members that are nominated, whatever the...
It gets pretty hairy if not everybody agrees to something like that. But, I mean, again, if it's coming out of your allocation, I don't think that any other city can, I mean, it's your water to do with what you please.
Okay.
But...
Mayor, we do have a customer like that, and that's Palader Canyon. They take part of our allotment.
Okay, so we currently have a customer that's tapped into a line from our Cremona oil field for the groundwater, okay? Can I change subject just a little bit here? But drought conditions from like twenty-ten, oh-seven on, whatever we really kind of experienced then. You know, we've seen weather modification, cloud seeding, things like that, where we now see the science in if we put this material up into a potential storm. You know, you may increase the water capacity out of that storm. You also may divert it to a different area, meaning it may take a typical time where it normally started raining to the west of Amarillo and continued on across Lake Meredith. Are there any studies that have been done on that weather modification part that could have contributed for our surface water drought during that time? Because if you look, we're coming back up right now, hopefully.
I'm not aware of any studies that have been done looking at that in particular. But what I will say is that, you know, if you go, if you read about the Colorado River Basin and what they're experiencing, and I'm drawing a blank on the names of the dams, but, you know, that Arizona, California, Utah, Colorado all rely upon. I mean, it's a very similar story when you look here west of what's going on as far as inflows to the reservoirs. And it's very difficult for us to quantify, you know, is that coming from lack of rainfall? Is that coming from increased temperature? Is that coming from declining aquifer levels? That, you know, maybe there used to be springs that were coming down, or not maybe. There, you know, spring flow is being reduced as the water table's being reduced. We have salt cedar that was covering our watershed, river alluvium area. Then we've addressed everything that we know and are capable of addressing like salt cedar, and we've improved the river channel coming into Lake Meredith. But I'm not aware of any studies to what you're talking about.
Okay. Yeah, and I just make that point here because I think it's a good point into the microphone of kind of how that manipulation can take place that moves water across the Panhandle in irregular ways that we could see a trend on potentially that would be negative for Cremona and all eleven cities. And so I think some of that is not regulated by the TDLR in the capacity that we would expect it to be. They don't have studies, they don't have things they can point to. They're putting missions up into the clouds for kind of a hope that it rains. And so, you know, a hope and rain is not a real good plan for, I think, our farmer ranchers around here and us as a large water rights holder as well. And so I guess the only other thing I would say is, do you, do you have any, does Cremona have any plans for kind of the desalinization of waters that we would say maybe are brackish and you're down further below? So I don't know how far deep we would get to get to that Santa Rosa, but like why we can't pump that? And then looking at all of our calculations, why would Cremona not be like the lead in something like that? Or are you already in just growing that footprint? Because I know we need infrastructure that comes online, but then as soon as you do that, you're now changing that water model. And so that water model now goes from two-hundred-and-fifty years of water rights that we own and feel comfortable with to, say, a hundred-and-fifty or whatever it is, if you continue to grow. Or does the state of Texas be able to pull that water further down south to other communities? So all that to say, like, what do you guys have in a plan moving forward that encompasses both aquifers and potential technologies?
So we just now, within the last few months, wrapped up a reverse osmosis feasibility study almost as an alternative to Cremona Two. I'm not saying that it won't happen eventually, but it's going to be very difficult financially to do both at the same time. But when we were looking at reverse osmosis, which essentially takes the salt out of the water, you know, we were looking at it primarily as a way to maximize our usage out of Lake Meredith. The problem is, is that our, you know, when we did a firm yield study, is looking at, you know, you can take X amount of water out of a reservoir, and during the drought of record, you're still going to have that same amount of water available during a drought of record. And that was, when we, our original studies were over a hundred thousand acre feet in the Meredith. In the nineties revised to in the seventies. Our most recent firm yield study that we did with HDR, it was less than seventeen thousand acre feet. So it's continuing to trend down. So we looked at that, while the capital cost is quite a bit cheaper than Cremona Two, operations and maintenance, it would essentially triple RO and M budget. They're very energy-dependent facilities. You know, we would have to have some highly-trained folks that we attract and hopefully keep to operate a facility like that. And then you still have the fear, okay, we've gone from a hundred to the seventies, now we're in the teens, what's it going to be in twenty years? And so, you know, we looked at that, and so you're, you know, it's a little worrisome to build a facility like that and kind of hang your twenty, thirty-year window of debt future on a project like that, knowing that it's not a foregone conclusion that the lake will be there. And so we looked at that. Another downside to RO is that we would be building it close to the lake for several reasons, but we'd still be relying on that old infrastructure to get it to town. So you would get, you know, you'd maximize more usage out of the lake, but we're still sending it all through sixty-year-old pipelines. And by the time that debt's paid off, we're talking about, you know, eighty, ninety-year-old pipelines at that point. And during that process, we looked at brackish water, kind of to your point. I'm sorry to be forever get there.
That's a great answer.
But we looked at, okay, so if we build, if we were to build a plant like this, and there's no water to put through it, that's not going to be a fun situation. We're still paying debt on it. And so is there a brackish resource nearby? The Dachau Aquifer, as you mentioned, going down deeper and getting it. And in the locations where it made sense for Cremona as an organization to benefit all of our member cities to build a plant like that, our early research that was done by the engineering firms did not show that there was much to be had in the area that we were looking at. Now, that varies as you move through the Panhandle. I believe Amarillo may even have some Dachau wells as well, but not in the quantities that are in the Ogallala, for sure.
That is, that's an excellent answer. And so you've looked at the studies, and if you guys had a lead on it, you'd take it?
Yes, sir. We'd certainly be bringing it to the cities.
Okay. Well, thank you. Mr. Hartman, do you have anything to add?
We have five Dachau wells, and they're not very good producers. Dachau tends to be intermittent in its capacity to pump.
As well as water quality.
Seven fifty, a thousand?
Well, I'm aware of sixty miles from Amarillo, there's a well that pumps about seven hundred gallons a minute. Thirty miles from Amarillo, there's a well that pumps about two hundred and fifty gallons a minute. Ten miles from Amarillo, there's a well that pumps five gallons a minute. It varies much more than the Ogallala.
Okay, well, I know this has been very educational, helpful. Thank you. Great presentation. Counsel, do you have anything else for our Cremona friends? Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank y'all for having me.
Appreciate you, sir. All right, request for future agenda items from the council, item eight E. Okay, we have nothing. We're going to go ahead and take a fifteen-minute recess. We'll see you guys back here at five-twenty. Thank you. Will officially call us back to order. We are moving into our section nine of the agenda, non-consent. We have item 9A, uh, here. Are we going to go ahead and have Ms. Carrie Roberts come up on this one staff or? Afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Do you have anything further you need to, to present on this one or, or would you?
I do not.
Okay. I, I know it's kind of a, not a normal, uh, presentation for you to give and it may just kind of be between us and the PID board, HOA, so.
Yes, sir. And Jason, Mr. Jason Burr, uh, with the Colonies Pid Advisory Board is here.
Okay. Um, Mr. Burr, if you don't mind coming up, I think it's probably appropriate to have you up here.
Hey.
Uh, you'll tell everybody who you are and, and what your position is on that board.
Um, Jason Burr, I'm a resident of the Colonies and I'm also the president of the PID board. Um, mayor, city councilman, I appreciate y'all having me. I appreciate all your, your, your work in doing this.
Let me, let me interrupt real quick. I've got one council member that needs to recuse himself. Councilman Tips.
Yep. So I'll step out.
So he's going to go ahead and step out, um, because he lives in the Colonies.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Go, go right ahead if, if you would. I'd love to know maybe when this got passed back down to your board from the council saying, you know, we tabled this and, and what your plan of action was, what the outreach to the community's been like and, and where you're at in, in this item.
Right. So, so, uh, two weeks ago, when Mr. McCammon came and expressed his concern, um, I, uh, the next day I was made aware of the, the, the issue, concern, those kinds of things. I actually reached out to, uh, Carrie to find out what's going on. And then I reached out to Rick Howell, who's the HOA board president, to kind of get some, you know, clarification of what was going on. Um, during conversations with him, there was, there was lots of concern that this had to do with a piece of land that is on church property that was being turned into a playground and that we were going to be paying for that, which is completely the incorrect information. So we decided at that point, let's, let's see if we can have an HOA board meeting, invite all the residents, notice everybody, y'all come to the meeting so we can, we can have that. And we actually had that meeting last night. Um, during these conversations, um, we have realized that there is a, a lack of communication between the PID board and the residents. A lot of residents have expressed that they didn't know that they were in a PID, what the PID is, what the PID boundaries are. And to be honest with you, I'm completely, I completely understand where the confusion comes from. Um, you know, we, we, there were, the church put up a sign that they were going to build a playground. There's a bunch of construction going on back there and the next thing they get is, hey, we need a million dollars. I understand why somebody that has not been through two and a half years of this like I have can jump to a conclusion as to what's going on. So we, we, uh, put out the meeting last, uh, last night. We, we come to the conclusion that we really do need to work on, like there's a city map, a developer map, some other map. There's all these maps out there and none of them jive with one another. And, and to be honest with you, the, the, the one on the city map's not even correct. So there's been some, hey, we really do need to button that up, tighten that up, get a uniform presentation so that there's, there's the correct informations out there. By the same thing, we, we noticed, uh, during this that the agendas are out there, the minutes aren't out there for the, for the PID meetings. So it, it makes it difficult for us to say, hey, notices are out there, the information's out there for y'all to go get it, but they're going to have to jump through a bunch of hoops to do that. So the first thing I've asked FIMC, which is our realty management, uh, company to do is on the HOA website to get a link to the city where they need to go. So they don't have to search for it as much until we can come up with what the plan needs to look like. Um, the, and there's been some confusion about the commercial rate. What was stated that, you know, homeowners are paying 15, but the, uh, commercial is paying 10, that's actually not correct, but there is some discrepancy about how it's actually being done at the appraisal district. We have the developer working with the appraisal district to get some clarification there. And, and the intention there is not for the commercial rate to be less than, that we, we want the commercial to be paying their fair share. And that's one thing that has been some miscommunication, misunderstanding during this whole process is that whole area that's back there, that's not part of the PID, that is commercial land and it's, and it's zoned general retail land is owned by the developer. While it's owned by the developer, there is not PID fees collected from the developer. The second that a lot is platted and sold to a land user, they start paying into the PID. So the development of that area benefits the PID because there's actually more revenue that comes in. Um, we've done some pro formas on everything. If and when all of that was filled out with commercial, it would pay for what we're talking about this development is, but you can't, we, it's, it's kind of a, you can't have the commercial before you do this and you can't have this before, I mean, it's, it's kind of that.
To, to clear that up, Mr. Burr, what is the, is there a difference in the rate from commercial to residential?
So the, the way that it is intended is that the rate is supposed to be the same for the first acre on a commercial lot. So 65, what is that number? 6546? 6546, uh, i- is, is their, their rate for the first acre. Then it's a decreased amount for any acreage after that. So there's been some confusion, is that 500, is that 750? And so.
So your, your rate is based on square footage, not on PRAD values?
No. It has nothing to do with PRAD value. It's purely square foot of a lot.
The, the worry that like, well, this was left ag and it, it hadn't been converted, so they're paying less in taxes. That may be somewhere in undeveloped areas, but then as far as it is for this discussion in the PID, there's a, there's a rate that applies to residential and commercial equally.
Correct.
But then after the first acre, uh, per square foot, right? Then it decreases for every square foot or every acre?
It's, I think it's, to be honest with you, there has never been a definitive answer how that works. So what we, what we believe has happened is the appraisal district took one lot that was over an acre. The developer gave them, this is how this should be calculated. And instead of them calculating one acre at this rate and a second acre at this rate, they just took the entire amount, divided it by what they owed, and it ended up being 10.143752 per square foot.
And that's, that would just be an error in the calculation. That wouldn't be anything in your PID, uh, bylaws or covenants, the way that it's, it's drawn up, right?
Correct. And that's, that's what the developer and is working on with the appraisal district to find out what's actually filed, how's it actually calculated, all of those things.
Developers full, well, willing to pay the, the full rate, does the residential rate pay? Um, and understands the way that the intention of this was for the second acre to, to receive a deduction?
Correct. That's, that's my understanding.
Okay. Um, so on the, on the cost share, was there also anything there, Mr. Burr, that there would be a cost share difference, um, in the way that this is paid for by the PID? So the, the developer or the commercial property doesn't have any cost share differential or, or paying less, uh, for this particular project?
I don't, I don't know that I understand your question. I don't know that I understand your question.
This particular project's being paid by the PID one hundred percent, just like all of the other bills that are coming to you, right?
Correct. Correct. This is, and one of the confusion points that we've had is, why are we doing this in a commercial area to benefit commercial land? And we have done this at every other entrance into the Colonies in the commercial area. So when you come into Continental, where Teddy Jack's is and all that, and the CPA firm and everything, we've got a buffer there, we've got concrete and flower beds and all that kind of stuff, it's just a, that's the buffer. And there's one from Aberdeen, there's one from Pilgrim, there's one from Patriot, where there is a improvement that was put there to enhance the neighborhood.
Okay. Can you speak to that drainage issue that was brought up? Is there a drainage issue that's being corrected here on the commercial property?
Yes. So when that land was requested to be changed from agriculture to general retail, the city council at that time had some concerns about wanting a buffer between the houses on Wesley and where commercial development started. And the residents, the PID, the HOA, and the developer did not want a multifamily unit there. We didn't want to put in apartments and that kind of stuff, which is a very common thing to do. And on top of that, we cannot drain to Saucy because it's TexDOT. And TexDOT said, you can't go that way, you got to go the other way. So because of the requirements for retention or detention of rainwater, the developer could sell those lots individually. Every one of those new landowners would have to dedicate X amount of square feet of their land to retention or detention, and it became a, do we really want sixteen pieces of property up there, and every single one of them's got a stagnant pond on them? So the idea became, we've got a buffer back here, what happens if we just take that whole back end of that area, combine it, it gets our retention-detention problem taken care of, it gets our buffer taken care of, and we have control over the way it looks, and we maintain it, we're in charge of picking out the trash and mowing it and those kinds of things, instead of leaving it on the homeowner, I mean, on the landowner. So because of that, and one thing that I want to make sure that's clear, the developer donated that land. That area back there is all donated. We did not buy that, it was not, it will be deeded over to the PID as a donation. The PID paid for the, the PID will be paying for, the sewage, the sewer drains, the, everything to get it to where it needs to go, and the concrete, grass, trees, lights. We also took the approach, we tried to do the minimum we could do to meet what we consider to be our aesthetic reasons. We did not choose to put in flower beds, we didn't choose to put in anything, it's just trees and grass.
So that's a great point, so let me ask, and then I'll let council jump in, but on the other approaches, entries into the Colonies, is that the precedent that, you know, the infrastructure, the lights, the sidewalks were paid for by the PID? Or was the developer responsible to pay for that infrastructure, and then the PID maintained it?
So the way that it has always worked is, the developer does all of the work, all of the contracting, now, it has to go through the city's purchasing department, and this project went through the purchasing department. We went through a scoring committee, we got bids, we went through everything to build this area. After all that work's done, all the receipts are collected, all that kind of stuff, then the PID owes the developer for that improvement. How we pay for that is where we all come in. So the developer can take that and just say, you know what, y'all can pay me when you want to pay me, which is the approach that they've taken. You just pay us whenever you want to pay us, and we'll ride it as long as you want to ride it. And in the past, what we've done is, we may ride five, six, seven, eight years before we even talk about that. In the meantime, and it's a favorable interest rate that they're giving us, but it's generating interest, and we're not paying on it. So it's just continuing to do this. The funding mechanism is to go get a bond to pay back that work that has been, that money that has been incurred. And so that's what this is. We decided, let's go get a bond now, go ahead and pay off the developer, he's free and clear, and go get the bond at a decent rate that's locked in, that we can pay and we can forecast. When I took over, when I first got on the board, and then I believe that I've been president about five or six years, when we first did that, we owed three or four million dollars to the developer, and it was just generating interest every year. Since then, everything behind that has been bonded, and we're paying it now.
So to make sure, like, your course of dealings, everything up until now has been consistent in, the developer put in the trees, the lights, the infrastructure sidewalk, they put a note out there, a PID assumed that note with interest, and you guys have been paying on those items since the beginning.
Correct.
And this one is the same.
Correct.
So this one is not a change in that, where developer's always paid for that out of his pocket, you know, he recouped that through profit, you guys just maintained it. I know you have some homeowners that think that way, like, well, my fee goes to just, you know, put in the flowers every spring and pay to trim the trees, but what you're actually saying is, those fees have been paying the interest and the principal on all of those public improvements.
Correct.
For that district.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm trying to establish, is that there's no change here in this particular parkway, or whatever you're calling it.
That's correct.
Other than that, you're bonding it now, and that's why it's coming.
Instead of, originally, when we looked at this, we were looking at bonding it in 2030, and doing that costs about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in interest.
Okay. Councilman, you have questions on this?
So let me just make sure that I'm clear on exact, so it's not a park, we've determined that, that's not what, tell me exactly what we're doing.
We put in a drainage ditch and made it pretty.
Okay.
Is essentially what we've done.
And tell me about, why is that a benefit to the neighborhood, the residents, the commercial side of it? Why is that a good thing to do?
Well, and I want to go back to Eric White spoke earlier today. That development that you see on the screen there, so that we're really talking about the left-hand side of this. So you see all that green area that starts at the top, there's a, that runs east-west, and then this whole thing that runs north-south. Eric White, when he was looking at putting in, and he already has offices in the, on the other side of Lexington, that he pays into the PID on those commercial things, he was looking at putting in a new building over here and renting it out. When he saw this, he went, you know, this is a little bit more conducive to what we've talked about wanting to do, to attract renters. So they decided to do this complex of mixed, it's got retail, it's got offices, it's got, and there's quite a few offices in there. But there's a med spa going in there, and it attracts not only investors that want to invest in things like this, but it attracts residents that want to rent those commercial buildings. Now, to the, and the second, the second that that was deeded to Eric White, he started paying PID fees. So that's one thing I want to make sure that's clear. There's also, to the west of that, right up against Patriot, there's a restaurant going in there. The idea here is that we make an amenity, we've taken something that is going to go there, they're going to put in commercial there, and making it where the residents have easy access to it, which is part of the, when you see that at the very north, the east-west, we were donated land from the church, a thirty-foot strip, so that we could get back to Wesley into the neighborhood, so we can make the walkway there, that you can actually access it from both ends, walk to it, you can walk to the restaurant, you can bike to the restaurant, all that kind of stuff, going forward. And everything there, anything that is built, will be required to have ingress and egress. So if you can get into that neighborhood, if you can get into this complex, you can get anywhere within that complex.
And then the benefit of the way that you're doing the fancy drainage ditch, is it's providing more of a barrier between residential and retail?
I wouldn't say that it create, it doesn't create a larger buffer, but with trees, it's a little bit, and I will tell you, I've not spoken with a single resident that lives on that alley, I mean, on that street. They have not been in any meetings, they haven't, you know, raised concerns, anything. So not only is it a benefit to those people, but in our minds, it's also a benefit to all of the residents that enter from Patriot. It's, if we had a concrete ditch there with cattails in it, and that's the first thing you saw when you were coming into the neighborhood, I think that there would be upset residents. And especially one that we didn't have any control over how it was being maintained.
Yeah. And then, so when you look at the budget on the things that you pay for, is it common, would you say that, I mean, that the commercial contributors to PID are paying for some things that may be more of a benefit to the residents than the business? I mean, does it go all into one?
Yeah, it all goes into the same bucket. So that commercial, I mean, Teddy Jack's is paying for this drainage ditch. I mean, they're paying money into a fund that doesn't benefit them.
But the other things.
Just like a homeowner, I'm paying into, I'm paying into this, the new restaurant that's going in is paying for the fountain. I mean, it's all congruous, and it's all one bucket of money.
So, but overall, the PID is to can do more things as it pleases, whether it's more benefiting to the residents or commercial, all that money comes together to allow you guys to determine which best, which products are best. So, I mean, paying for the, whatever, for the gardening of the flowers or whatever, I mean, everybody's contributing, now, you're not planting flowers in front of the business, they're contributing to it, but that's a benefit for the residents.
Correct. Correct. And one thing that I do want to, there was some confusion, none of, none of what we do is maintenance of any homeowner's land or commercial land or anything. We don't mow the commercial lots. That is on the, that is on the landowner, the business owner.
Yeah. And then you said one thing about the financial benefit to the PID, about the commercial development, and that, tell me a little bit more about, I mean, I guess obviously, if having commercial development is going to have more dollars going into the PID.
Correct. So one thing to keep in mind, it's a very hard thing to calculate, because the way that we've talked about doing this, where it's X amount per square foot for the first acre, and then a certain amount after that, if one user bought that entire square up there, well, that's going to be a different rate than if we put in ten different things up there. So we've done the best, I think that we looked at it from a standpoint, if there were ten users within there, how long does it take to pay off this drainage? And it was about twelve years, I believe, and I don't have my financial PID guy with me. But you also have to keep in mind, that would be if it was completely full, and everybody was paying day one, which is not, which is not going to happen. I mean, we're, the goal here is, and part of this is, the developer's very picky about what buyers he will accept. He has purposely made this where he doesn't have any interest in Quiklube, fast food, you know, O'Reilly Auto Parts, those kinds of things. He really does want this to be complimentary to the homeowners that live in the Colonies.
Thank you. Councilman Reed, you have anything?
So has this already happened?
Well, so the, the, the contract for the contractor has been issued, signed by the city, the work, I don't want to say the work's been completed, all of the drainage is there, all of the sewers there, most of the dirt works there, they're starting to lay concrete for that sidewalk now. We've incurred, let me rephrase that, Rock Rose has incurred the debt, and the city has signed off on this, that they have a contract with the contractor. So the only way to unwind this would be for the city to breach a contract. So it's really a question more of how we're paying for this, not if we're paying for this. Do we want to, do we want to just write a check for a million dollars? Do we want to go get a bond? Do we want to kick the can down the road and deal with it later? Those kinds of things.
So if the, council? I've got a question for council.
Mr. McWilliams?
So if we, if we didn't go along with this and we breached this, what's the effect on the city?
I wouldn't want to answer that question out here without looking through the documents, you know?
Without?
Without looking through all the contract documents, I don't have those in front of me, so I don't know. You know, there may be other avenues we could explore, but I would need to research that.
But would the financial obligation fall on the city?
Depends on what the contract says.
And I don't, I don't know what the ramifications of that, I have no idea. We've never, we've never had to deal with anything like this before.
Is land already transferred over, or is that in the process?
The land has not transferred to the PID.
It hasn't yet?
It has not. That doesn't happen until work's complete.
Okay.
And then it's deeded over.
Right.
Because we don't want to be incurring interest.
Right.
The second he deeds it over, we start, we start the interest process.
All right. Nothing else? The boundaries, have they changed? The PID boundaries, are they original and still in place?
My understanding, the official boundaries have never changed.
Okay. Can staff confirm that, that the PID boundaries for the Colonies' development are not expanding? This is not gathering in additional commercial areas?
I think there may have been some changes in the boundary that we're still trying to confirm, particularly the AISD property that was maybe out at one point and then brought back in.
You're talking about the area in the middle?
In the middle.
And I misspoke there. The, where we're talking about, my understanding, this area between Wesley and Saucy has always been.
Always been in, yes.
Okay.
The area that is the, I don't even know what they call it, phase something, it's the tombstone-shaped area right in the middle of the Colonies, which was, you know, up in the air, what are we going to do with it? It's going to be a park, it's going to be a school, it's going to be whatever it is, and then it was deeded back to, it was sold back to a developer, they built lots there. If you look on the map, it shows that it's not in the PID. I know those people are paying into the PID. So it's something, and something that we brought up probably six months ago, is, hey, why is this incorrect? And we just have not gotten an answer yet.
If I, and I'm not an owner in the Colonies, but if I was an owner in the Colonies and I came and I bought a piece of land, or I bought a house, would I be given a document that states this arrangement, and would I have the understanding of reading that and knowing that my dollars I'm paying in, so much per square foot, you know, and that that can change? And then would this have represented the full PID boundary in that set of documentation?
I'll answer two ways. I believe that when you close on your property, the PID documents are part of that closing. What's in that, I could not tell you, and I couldn't tell you whether there's a PID map in there or not.
And that was a recent state law, I think 2017 or 2019, that required in closing to disclose it, that you're in a PID.
So the real issue is the trigger, then, if, assuming the boundaries haven't changed, and all the commercial property is already inside of the PID, and nobody is going and grabbing a piece of commercial property to put it in the PID that, you know, could then help to pass along cost of development services, then those properties have always been part of that district. Assuming that, then there's a trigger that you don't necessarily have to pay for those square feet as the owner, original developer, until you plat and sell a lot. Once you plat and sell the lot, then it becomes part of that per-square-foot rate, and it's going to be assessed and pay into this.
Correct.
And. And, and assuming that the developer has consistently been getting reimbursements through the PID for all infrastructure in these common areas, which I would like staff to verify, then I don't know that this council has a, uh, an obligation or an opportunity, I'll say it either way. Like, if, if the contracts are signed and you, the homeowner, signed them, I'm in no position to tell you that you shouldn't follow your own contract. Um, and I think our city attorney's doing a good job of making sure he's not giving a legal answer without reading a contract, because I think to a certain extent, that's kinda what we're being asked to do. Give a decision that affects a million dollar financial encumbrance between parties that have already signed, that are all separate parties from us three individuals. So it's unfortunate that I think we're put in this position, um, and I think it's unfortunate that you and the PID board are kinda having to learn as you go on some of this as well, and, and you're citing some things that need to be, uh, updated and improved, right? And, and to that, I think that's, that's, I esteem that, I think that's the right way to go. There's some humility in that and willingness to just say, look, we can do better, let's do it. I would almost look at this as just an opportunity to move forward, not to make the same mistake again. Uh, that happens through education and communication, I think you guys probably haven't been communicated with, uh, to the extent that you need to be. We, as the city, probably hold some of those, uh, cards in accessibility to, you know, online documents and, and making it friendly on our, our website. So we would like to partner with the PID board in improving the communication for our homeowners in this district. Um, we, I think, as a council, are gonna be faced with a decision we can vote on. My, my position is, is I don't have an opportunity to vote against you, because you are the ones that signed these documents and have been, um, in this course of dealings. You've, you've done business like this since you've moved in there. And so if anything had changed, and if it does change, then I think you have a cause of action. But like, up until that, if nothing has changed, they didn't expand the boundary and, and you, you've always been reimbursing the developer in some form or fashion, uh, be it bonded or be it, you know, interest and principal paid out over time and he's carrying the note, I don't think this council has the opportunity nor the legal authority to change that obligation. Um, and I, and I, I'm not a lawyer, obviously, so I don't know better, but I'd hate to assume that I, that I would have that opportunity. So, council, I'll let you give any final remarks, but I don't know that I have anywhere else to take this item.
Well, I, I would say not only to the colonies, but this really hasn't been the first time that we've encountered a PID issue where everybody didn't know what's going on, which is pretty common, nobody really pays attention and until it's, you know, you get the bill for it and that type of thing. So I, I would just say, you know, anything along with, with other PIDs, if there are new things, ways that we can suggest, communicate, you know, try to initiate that, I think hopefully citizens that live in PIDs will, will realize, you know, that, uh, that, you know, those are there, but I think, and it's a two-way street on the communication part, but I think-
Well, and, and to speak along those lines, um, one of the things that we have looked at as a self-imposed responsibility, because we are the largest PID in the, in, in Amarillo, we generate the most revenue of any PID in Amarillo, we have ag- again imposed a self-imposed responsibility to be an example of what the other PIDs should follow with the city. So, uh, over the last five years, I believe we've gone from crisis mode of, oh my gosh, what are we gonna do about landscaping? And getting a good solid contract there, a good solid contract on trees, a good solid contract on electrical, so that every time something comes up, it's not a 12-month process, it's a phone call or a shortened process to be able to get those things remedied, so that purchasing, uh, with the help of purchasing in the city and accounting and everybody, to understand and develop some processes for how those things work. The next step, and, and I'll, and I'll be honest and, and be the first one to say, the communication part of it was not part of the crisis. And not, not excusing it, but that was, it was more about making sure that there was pretty flowers in the flower beds on, at the right time of year, than it was about telling the residents by email that we were gonna be putting in flowers.
Anything further, councilman?
I think, I think another thing, and it goes back to the communication issue, when you live in, uh, a PID, um, there's confusion because you know you're in HOA, and then all of a sudden you hear the, the term PID, and you're like, well, what is that? I thought we had an HOA. And I think so that's something that I, both the city has to work on, and the, the HOAs and the PIDs, to make sure that those are, things are communicated really on the front end. I live in one of them, and I, I did not know when I first moved in there, um, what the PID was.
And I'll be honest with you, I didn't either.
Right? And so, uh, that's, that, that's something that has to be cleared up too, I think, you know, on both ends.
Um, Mr. City Attorney, do you need to verify anything before we take action on this? Um, we would have an opportunity to table this once again, push it out, and still meet all your deadlines, if we needed to substantiate, PID boundaries haven't changed, uh, reimbursements to developer, all that, or if you feel comfortable giving us guidance, then I think we'd be comfortable taking action on it today.
Uh, yes, this is ready for action. So, um, you can table it if you wish, but it's ready for action.
Well, and this also is just the first reading. I mean, it's gonna have to come back again one more time, correct? So there's still, if anything comes out of the blue, there's still time, this is not the final.
Okay. So I would like to reiterate to the homeowners, um, that are involved in this process, we definitely understand your appeal. I think the appeal comes with an insight into kinda how this has been procured for years now, and, and things have been done, the, the procedures that are currently being done, your involvement's greatly appreciated. Um, the documents are the documents, if you signed them, I think you're obligated to them, much like any covenant that we take on. And I don't, I don't find anywhere where we, even though it comes to us in a formal way of like, hey, you gotta approve this, I, I really don't. I think the approval is, is, it's a formality, but I think the approval is really between the PID board and, and its constituents. Um, so I would just recommend further involvement over there and cleaning this up and making sure this doesn't happen again, but I think at this juncture, we don't have an opportunity to stop something from happening, it has already happened. And so, uh, with that, I would ask for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8216 as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion from place four, second from place one. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 3-0 vote.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will move into item 9B, public hearing consideration, uh-
Mayor, we're, we're gonna grab Councilor Tips real quick before we get started.
Okay, thank you.
I think Steffy just went out to go find himself.
I, I would've totally left him out there for the rest of the-
We could, we could tell the meeting's over now, I guess, but-
Yeah. You'd think he'd be more, uh, rememberable, memorable than that.
Yeah. I remembered him.
Hey, Mr. Balzen, how you doing today?
I'm doing good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I'll, I'll wait for him to get here.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, uh, I'm pleased to bring this item to you now, finally. You saw this as a discussion item last meeting, this is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending, uh, the City of Amarillo zoning code, chapter 410, it's sections 36, 361, 82, 85, 87, 152, 168, 170, 174, 211, 248, 269, of which the main purpose of all this is basically to create a new zoning district, a moderate density one, to define the allowed uses and the standards for the new district, and to rename modern density district to modern density district two. Um, I did wanna include these two slides again on here because I think they're important to note, uh, this, this proposed change does not change or force the change of any existing zoning on any property, it doesn't change any existing development standards of existing zoning districts, doesn't allow any new land uses in permitted zoning districts, it does not prohibit any land uses of, uh, currently allowed in existing zoning districts. Uh, this does create an option for rezonings in the future, uh, it creates a district that fills a gap between existing residential districts, it creates a zoning district that allows for smaller, single-family detached lots, uh, it also creates a potential, uh, option, uh, to fix some of those, uh, non-conforming duplexes that were, uh, created in 2004. Our goals on this were to create more options in housing development, we did utilize input from developers and real estate, uh, stakeholders, uh, we did want it basically create no impacts to existing properties and districts, uh, to, and also to protect existing single-family neighborhoods while helping remove some of the barriers that we're seeing with infill development, um, and then also to create a transition between single-family detached housing and apartments. Uh, this is a recap of our, uh, analysis summary where we identified, uh, we have a land use gap between our R3 district and our MD, our MD district, and that's basically single-family detached to apartments. Uh, and then we identified that we kinda have a gap in development standards for, uh, single-family detached housing, uh, and kind of a need for a, uh, denser, uh, product for that. Uh, we did identify the co- conflict there as well, 410, 168D. Our proposed changes, we'd look at renaming, uh, modern density district to modern density district two, that's just clerical purposes only, we'd create a new modern density district one, uh, this would include R3 land uses, uh, plus single-family detached and duplex, duplex uses. Uh, the standards there are shown for single-family detached and single-family attached, and so basically to bridge this gap, we looked at, uh, trying to increase density of single-family detached and decreasing the density of single-family attached. Um, so single-family detached with the R3, increase the density, uh, looking at decreasing the density of the single-family attached that was in the modern density district, which would be MD2 now. Uh, we did look at, uh, trying to fix that code issue for 410, 168D by going through an SUP process instead of during a plat consideration, and then we looked at reducing, uh, street front edge minimums from 40 feet to 35, and that's in conjunction with the reduced lot widths for the single-family detached areas. And I know that our packet basically has a lot of documents, is a really big ordinance, um, there's a lot of sections that this affects, but it's, everything is basically right here that, uh, is, is broken down out of all those pages that you received. And I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Balzen? We appreciate the hard work, sir.
Yes, sir.
Would, uh, ask for a motion, council? Oh, that's correct, thank you. Uh, at this time, we will open a public hearing. Do I have anyone that would like to speak for or against this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing and thank Councilmember Simpson for keeping me straight on item 9B, and ask for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8217 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 4-0 vote. Welcome back, Councilmen Tips.
Thank you.
Item 9C, we have Ms. Storrs coming forward to talk about our tax rate.
Um, good evening, mayor and council, um, I've got the next few items that I'll be, um, going over with you all. Um, this first one is, um, the first reading of an ordinance to, um, adopt the 25, 26 budget for the City of Amarillo fiscal year. This budget allows the city to continue providing effective public services programs and assistance to Amarillo residents in the upcoming year. Um, as you're all aware, we have been through several days of budget review, um, going through, um, a lot of details. My presentation tonight is fairly high level, um, covering some of the high points of it, but, um, can certainly answer any questions, or we can, um, elaborate a little bit more as needed if council would like. So the first slide here, just kinda wanted to talk about some highlights that, um, of items that are included in this proposed 25, 26 fiscal year budget. So we do have funding for one new police officer and one new firefighter. A reminder on the police officer, it is a, um, school liaison officer, but we would have, um, most likely access to that officer during the summer months. Um, we do have a 4% raise included for police and a 3% raise included for fire. We have over $30 million in street projects included in this proposed budget. There is a funding, there is funding for a new dangerous structure removal team, um, with our solid waste group, um, to help with some of those dangerous structures that have been around our community to help us address those a little bit more timely. Um, we do have continued annual funding for parks capital projects. We have $36 million in water and sewer projects with grant funding that would be dedicated to start the design, um, process for our wastewater facilities that are, um, for the changes upcoming on those. Um, we have continued, um, $1.4 million in funding for the new women's clinic over at our public health department. We have 2% raises for civilians and partial implementation of a pay study. And then finally, for our retirees, we have stepped up the COLA, or restored the COLA to the 70% um, amount that was in place prior to 2011. So how did we do all of that? Let's talk about numbers for a minute. In the current year, our total, um, budget, this is the entire city, this is everything, this is water and sewer and drainage and airport and grants and general fund, everybody, is $499.3 million. Um, that's in the current year. It is growing by about $57.7 million to, um, the proposed budget for this next year of $557 million. So those items that I covered on the first page are really the bulk of the change. Um, one thing just to keep in mind on that big change, um, $25 million of this change from one year to the next is just in the grant funding alone that we're looking to receive to start designing those wastewater facilities. So that's, um, a huge win for our community, but it does bump up that budget number by all means. Um, a couple other things just of note, we are, um, continuing the dedicated dumpster replacement program, so the funding's in the budget for that as well, and for some ongoing paramedic training through our, um, fire department. So on the revenue side, current year, we had revenue of $468.1 million budgeted, um, we've grown that by $70.6 million to our proposed revenue budget of $538.7 million for 25, 26. So some highlights on what, uh, makes up some of that change, sales tax, um, is up in our budget by about $2.7 million, property taxes are up about $3.8 million for operations alone. Um, as I mentioned just a second ago, we have $25 billion in grant funding for those, the design of wastewater facilities or beginning the design of those wastewater facilities. We, um, are looking to receive $5 million in grant funding for an emergency operations center. Um, we do have a 3% CPI increase on our environmental health fees along with our building safety fees, and that's just trying to keep up with the cost of those services. Um, at our golf course, we are looking to, um, increase those green fees by $2, um, just to help with cost recovery in that area as well. On our solid waste rates, what a single-family residence would see is about, is a 92 cent per month increase on their bill, and our commercial customers would see a 26.1% increase on their monthly bills. On water and sewer, we're looking to increase those rates, uh, by 5%, and as a reminder, that's to help fund some needed capital projects in this next year, and then we will evaluate that rate going forward if we wanna use it for future debt issuances, or if we wanna continue using it to fund, um, annual capital purchases. And then finally, on drainage, we are not looking to make any changes to those, um, user fees. So with that, um, wanted to, um, make sure and point everyone back to our website at amarillo.gov, on our front page, um, down towards the bottom, there's a public notice section, there's a link right there to our updated proposed budget, so citizens can go out there and view that if they wanna see more detailed information. So today, um, this item is the first reading of the ordinance on the proposed budget, and there needs to be, um, a, a record vote on that. And so we have posted in the newspaper and on the city's website, um, about a public hearing that we will do next Tuesday at this same time here at City Hall. We'll do a public hearing on the proposed budget, we will also do a separate, um, public hearing on the proposed tax rate, then we will have the second reading of the ordinance on this budget and, um, proceed with the property tax rate approvals as well. Are there questions that I- Are there questions that I can answer for council?
No questions, counsel. Thank you, Mrs. Storrs. At this time, we have item 9C before you for consideration, counsel.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8218 as presented.
And there is actually motion language, I apologize. There's motion, motion language in your package that this, these two items are, state law is very particular on how.
Oh, I forgot. Don was in charge of that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Don.
I got you, Les.
Yeah, Don can read well. Go ahead, Don. I'll let you take it. I forgot you were in charge.
I got it. I got you, Les. I move adoption of ordinance number 8218, adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1, 2025 through September 30th, 2026 for the city of Amarillo.
Second. Did we get the, get all the motion language in for the second? Okay, city attorney says yes. All right, we got a motion and a second on item 9C. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 4-0 vote. We'll move into item 9D with Mrs. Storrs.
All right, so this next item here is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the city of Amarillo tax rate for the upcoming year. And if I can pause just a second, Mayor, I apologize. On the last item, and it's also posted in the back of the agenda, there's a new state law that requires us to post taxpayer impact statement, and I also wanted to encourage anyone, if they have a question about that, it's, it's posted on this agenda, that it's posted on the face of the agenda and as an attachment. I just wanted to make you all aware, that is a state law change that went into effect September 1st, so a couple of days ago.
So, quickly, just to read that out loud, you've got a median value homestead property of $142,000 as an average.
That's in Potter County.
In Potter County.
Yes, Randall County is up above that, and it's a little, it's slightly different.
So, let's take the, the Randall County average, 245, 883.
Yes, sir.
Tax impact would be the difference of 106, 89 for the year, $106.89.
That's correct, for the year.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, no, I think, appreciate you pointing that out.
Yes, and I apologize, I kind of went right over that. So, this next item here, oh, thank you, and Stephanie's pulling it up there, so it's, it's there on the face of the agenda, just trying to provide as much information to taxpayers as possible. So, the next item here is 9D, and this is consideration and first reading of the ordinance approving the city of Amarillo tax roll and setting the ad valorem property tax rate. And so, there's some information there on your agenda for you, and we have gone over this as well in quite a bit of detail during our budget review sessions earlier this year. So, I'm going to kind of go over the highlights here. If you remember, at the last meeting two weeks ago, the city council set the maximum property tax rate, which was the voter approval tax rate. Now, we do have the budget filed proposed at this point in time at that voter approval tax rate. So, let me go into a little explanation on that. So, state law states that a, the governing body can increase the MNO side, so the maintenance and operations side of the tax rate approximately 3.5% over the prior year. Anything above and beyond that automatically has to go to an election, and state law also tells us when those elections occur, which is in November, the last day to call the election was August 18th. So, we're already past all of that. But, we're also required to provide notice to our property owners and hold one public hearing. And so, I'll talk about that here in just a second. So, we have posted all of this information about our property tax rates. It's all out on the city's website at amarillo.gov. Down towards the bottom, under the public notice section, there's a few notices in there about property tax rates. So, I certainly encourage everyone to go out and look at that. We also have posted in the newspaper about an upcoming public hearing, and it's also posted on our website. And I apologize, but for some reason, my slide did not come through the best on here, but let me walk you through this. Our 2024 tax rate, our current tax rate, is 38.723 cents. And as I covered two weeks ago, we are looking to bring forward a proposed tax rate of 43.070 cents, and that is the voter approval tax rate. That's the maximum rate that a council can approve without an election. Thank you, Stephanie, she's trying to modify it for me. What this would look like, if a taxpayer had a $100,000 home, so just helping them, kind of helping people do math here, that same home, if it had the same value last year as it does this year, this would be about a $4 per month increase on their property tax bill related to the city of Amarillo. Now, on an average home, now, an average home, and this is where it gets a little bit, so we just covered the median home value, the average home value is a little bit different than that, and the average home value is closer to about $280,000. They would see an $11 per month increase year over year, and that's factoring in properties in Potter and Randall County. We're kind of unique here because we're sitting on top of two different counties. So, with this 43.070 tax rate, what we could provide is our current service levels that we are already providing here at the city, along with the new police officer, new firefighter, continued funding for fire apparatus, the 4% raise for police, 3% for fire, and 2% merit for civilians, $30.7 million in street projects, and the TMRS COLA at 70%, and a lot more than that. And again, we have all, a lot of information out on amarillo.gov, so certainly encourage people to go out and look at the city's website. So, what comes next is today, we do the first reading of this ordinance on the property tax rate, and we have to do a record vote as well. And then, on September 16th, so a week from today, we will come back and we will ask you all to conduct a public hearing, and then on a separate item, we will have you do the second and final reading on the ordinance to approve the property tax rate and do a record vote, and then you will follow that with another vote to ratify the tax rate. So, as mentioned, we have posted notice in the newspaper and on the city's website about the upcoming public hearings. Encourage citizens to come out next Tuesday for the public hearing on the budget and the public hearing on the property tax rate. Are there questions that I can answer?
I have one question, just because of the way I think it's being represented, and I want to clarify it in case we're not representing it that way.
Sure.
The previous slide shows what this purchases, 43 cents purchases all these, 30.7 million in street projects. Is any of that 30.7 part of the street department versus part of the CIP?
Part of it is, yes, sir. Part of it is the street department and part of it is the CIP. So, and just to clarify, that is what is included in the city's budget. Our property taxes alone will not fund all of those items there. Property taxes help to fund the items that are there, our sales taxes go a long way as well.
Just as a clarification statement for anybody that's watching or may look back at the proposal there, these are a few items that are listed in our overall working budget that are cumulative from sales tax, property tax, other revenues, as well as monies that we have from CIP capital improvement projects. Am I saying that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, you guys have any questions for Mrs. Storrs?
I just have, so, and I guess this is the wording that comes out from the state that we have to have it worded exactly like this.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. There should be motion language in there.
And I'm sure Don will get it right when this time comes.
Yes, we hope so.
So, we, we lowered the tax rate two consecutive years.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
But, but we took in more money, even though we lowered the tax rate.
Yes, sir.
And that's because home values, I guess, were probably a major part of the reason why the tax rate came down, not because we were not getting our 3.5%, which we're allowed, but, but home values, I think, could go up like 10% a year, I think was, you know, even if you're in one appraisal, even if it went up 30%, you had to rate that out over no more than 10% a year.
No more than, on, if you have your home set in exemption, no more than 10% a year.
So, I guess, part of why this rate is going up, because it, you know, the, the language clearly identifies it's 15.3%, it's not that your tax bill is, the rate is not in and of itself determining what you get charged, the value of your home.
Yes, sir.
Is part of that as well. And so, now that we're seeing a leveling off of, I guess, appraised values, that's where, that's probably part of this increase, I would guess.
Yes, that is correct. That's a really good point. So, coming out of COVID, we saw home values start rising pretty rapidly here in our community. At one point, we saw average values, now that's commercial and residential, for the city of Amarillo, go, they rose over 12% in one year. So, the city was having to pull back that tax rate, to your point, because we had so much growth in the values that we had to lower the tax rate to still only capture that 3.5% growth. We have seen that starting to back off a little, and then this year, we were a little over 3% in growth, which is getting back to almost what we would call a norm for the city of Amarillo. And so, yes, we are probably going to see certain years where the tax rate's going to stay either very close to what it was the year before, or potentially grow a little bit, because those appraised values are not generating enough more in value for the city to capture the full 3.5%. The other piece of it is, there has been some debt issuances to fund some very important projects. Speaking of the, the fire apparatus, that was a huge project that is going to set our fire department up for success, that they have kind of been trailing behind on their fire apparatus the last several years. And the first debt issuance that was approved earlier this year is really going to put them in a great spot. That is showing up on the tax rate this next year. So, part of it's from the operations side, and part of it is from the debt service side as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything further, counsel? Item 9D is before you.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .43070 cents, which is effectively a 15.30% increase in the tax rate.
Second. I have a motion and a second from place one. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Recorded vote shows 4-0, motion passes. All right. We will now move into item 9E, Mrs. Storrs.
Yes, and on 9E, this is the first reading of a resolution to amend the city of Amarillo financial policies. So, I don't have a presentation on this, but I'm going to kind of speak to this. We talked a lot about these financial policies during budget review. We did, let me move this forward. We did talk about some significant changes that we had proposed in the financial policies for this upcoming year, but the city of Amarillo follows best practices for government finance, and we have financial policies that are in place to help us maintain a good credit rating that also helps us ensure that we have the lowest interest rate possible anytime we're issuing debt, and that can save taxpayers thousands to millions of dollars. So, it is important that we maintain good, solid financial policies. The main change that we have in our financial policies that are there before you, you should all have copies of it there, and once approved, this will go inside our approved budget book, so it will be available if citizens ever want to look at this. This is readily available and posted out on the city's website. But, we have historically had a minimum reserve policy for our general fund that was approximately three months' worth of operating budget. We would maintain that in a reserve fund, and so a reserve fund is essentially your savings account. So, if there's ever a disaster, an emergency, things, you know, revenues start trailing behind for some reason, that savings account, that reserve, is what the city would essentially tap into. Best Practices says that local government should maintain anywhere from a 60 to 120-day minimum reserve policy. We maintain right in the middle at a 90-day reserve policy. For our proprietary funds, so that's water and sewer, airports, drainage, those, they have the same policy of a minimum reserve of 90 days of operations plus one year of cash-funded capital. So, in discussions with counsel this year, we have proposed a slight change to that minimum reserve policy, and what that would look like is we have internal service funds. So, without me getting too deep into government finance, we have some funds, like our IT department, that only serve the other departments in the city. And so, our city departments have to pay into IT in order for IT to be able to fund the services they provide the other departments. What we're recommending on the minimum reserve policy is to exclude any funding to internal service from, funds from that 90-day reserve calculation. So, what that does, our internal service funds have their own reserves, and this is essentially allowing the other funds not to have an additional amount reserved or set aside for internal service funds. So, it's just a slight change that we are very comfortable with. We've talked about this quite a bit with counsel during budget review. So, that is listed on page, page six in your financial policies. It goes over your minimum reserves. The other item of note is that on page seven, we did put a section in the policy related to budgetary sales tax revenue shortfall contingency plans. This is something that we have historically practiced here at the city, but we had never memorialized it inside our financial policies. In talking with Mr. Path, he was in agreement that it would be best to formalize it, put it in the policy. So, essentially, because sales tax is our number one revenue source for our general fund, if we start sitting, seeing sales tax lag behind what we had budgeted, there are certain steps we probably need to start taking in order to ensure that we don't overspend if the revenue's not coming in at the correct level. So, it's got some kind of, some suggested, now, these are suggestions, they, it depends on the circumstance, we would work very closely with counsel in communicating all of these measures with them. But this is, we did essentially follow similar contingency plans. When COVID first hit and we were unsure what was going to happen with the local economy, we started putting some measures in place to kind of hold back on spending. This kind of memorializes what we would look at doing. So, you know, anything from, you know, not sending people off to like travel or training, you know, conference-type things, it might mean if we have brand-new positions that we haven't filled yet, we might hold off filling them till a little bit later. It could look like if delaying some capital purchases, if we thought that it was going to be severe enough, we needed to give it some time to see how we do. So, this protects the city. This protects the services that the city provides in the circumstance that maybe sales tax starts coming in less than what we had anticipated. So, other than that, your financial policies are essentially exactly the same as they have been for quite a while. We rearranged some things and cleaned up some wording, just to make it a little bit more user-friendly. I don't know that anybody feels that 20 pages of government financial policies is user-friendly, but we tried to make it as user-friendly as we could. So, with that, are there questions that I can answer related to this?
Counsel, questions on financial policy? No, okay. Mrs. Storrs, I do have some, so, Grayson, I'm looking at the highlighted version that has the yellow, the red, and I think the green, so what was struck and what wasn't? And so, what I, what I heard you say was like the reserve policy has changed, and I've read that section on page six, but was, is, is this the draft that then became what is before us? So, these red line item issues have been struck or removed?
Yes, so that one, I don't believe we had the minimum reserve changes in that one specifically, so that was the only other change passed, the version that you're looking at, Mayor. That's a good point.
So, this, this version that I'm looking at here includes all changes with the exception of the reserve policy, which obviously I'm in favor of.
Yes.
Okay, so, if I could, I want to look at just a few items for further clarification. I don't know that you, you probably know it like the back of your hand, so I don't know that your page numbers are the same as mine. But, I'll get there. So, I'm curious on debt policies. If you look on, this draft is page 26, I don't know your page number, I apologize. Debt policies, if you go down to the, the version that I'm looking at, what was struck is it says when debt is issued, "City of Amarillo will employ competent financial advisors and bond counsel. The city shall use a competitive bidding process in sale of debt unless..." The city shall use a competitive bidding process in sale of debt unless the use of a negotiated process is warranted due to market timing requirements, refunding, or unique pledge or debt structure." That shows to be struck. Is that struck out?
So on the debt section, and it's a little bit misleading because the debt section, we reworded the entire thing, but those are still part of our financial policies. So the city has, um, the intentions to always go out for a competitive bid. We will always work with financial advisors and bond counsel, but we would go out for a competitive bid, um, on any of our debt issuances unless to, the items that you talked about, if we were looking to do a refunding, if it was a, um, maybe a smaller debt issuance, sometimes the market doesn't have a lot of interest in it, but we would work closely with our financial advisors on those. But the recommendation would be normally we will go out for a competitive bid.
So no problem keeping that in there?
Yeah.
And you have that in the wording, I just haven't had time to see it, but if you rearranged it, do you know perhaps where it's spelled at?
So if you look-
Is that the second paragraph there?
Yeah, if you look more towards, let's see here, yeah, on, um, page 11, on the copy that's in the agenda, if you look under the debt policies section, under financing alternatives, look there at the second one, second paragraph, it says, "When debt is issued, the city of Amarillo will employ competent financial advisors and bond counsel. The city shall use a competitive bidding process in the sale of debt unless the use of a negotiated process is warranted due to market timing requirements, refunding, or a unique pledge or debt structure."
So that, that's simple, so we're keeping it?
It's there, yes, sir.
So that's great, okay. Let's go to the next one.
I'll add too, it's been a few months since, since we touched on this, Laura, but I'm pretty sure that's a section we had bond counsel help us write.
Yes, yes.
So one of the requests that I had was that bond counsel update our bond section to correspond with state statute. So I think that's, they, they re, they reworked the whole thing, they reorganized some things in different, different places, but then they added language, took away language in order, in accordance with state statute.
Yes, that is correct, yes.
That's great.
Bond counsel has signed off on all of this.
Some of these may just be an exercise of due diligence to make sure that you still have them, but if you go on the next page of, of mine, which is page 27, it, it says, um, the part that struck is, "The project manager will receive monthly reports on the spending process to comply with this rule. Before that, bonds will only be issued in amount that can be reasonably spent within three-year period." I, I appreciate that. I'm curious why we would, why we would want to strike the project manager receiving those monthly reports as kind of a minimum.
Okay, let me look in here. I think it is still in here, but I'll have to look. I may have to get back with you on that, just because I don't want to spend too much time just reading through these 22 pages.
And get a lot, get a lot of language, it may have been struck there, but it was, it was reorganized in a different location.
So it looks like it's, yeah, it looks like it's back in.
Do what?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, still got it.
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Great.
Yep.
Just a few more to confirm.
And then we do have on page 12, at, um, page 12 there, that top section, it's the fourth bullet down, it says, "The city shall comply with all Internal Revenue Service rules and regulations, including to, but not limited to, arbitrage rebate." So that would be that three-year spending limit as well. That's an IRS rule.
That's a catch-all for everything.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, um, if we can go down to budget process, um, starts with, "City uses traditional line item budget approach."
Yes.
It says, "All programs have demonstrated connection to supporting council pillars," and that was shown to be removed. Is that back in there?
So we have, we, and that was something that Grayson and I worked on a little bit. We have moved the pillars essentially to, or the, the, yeah, the, the city council pillars to an exhibit, because those are items that can change.
Change, change.
Yes. And so, um, we did take some reference out, I think, um, directly to that, knowing that those could change based on what elected officials are in place.
My thought there was, it's easier to amend an exhibit versus going back and amending the policy. It's, I know, it may seem simple, but I, I would recommend that councils amend exhibits and not go back, try to open the whole policy up.
I agree. I think that's great. So you're catching that in an exhibit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Can we go down to, uh, section number four, expenditures right there?
Yes.
And, and forgive me, I'm going to read this, so. "Expenditures may not legally exceed appropriations at the fund level for each legally adopted annual operating budget. City manager may transfer appropriation balances from one expenditure account to another within a department or fund. City manager may also increase revenues and expenditure budgets by a corresponding amount when anticipated outside of funding." Overall, is what this is saying is that, that you have an overall arching budget of a set dollar, and that city manager is being given the, the authority to move monies around within that overall budget?
So, um, it's a budget by fund. So for instance, if we were to talk about the general fund, so, as, what state law requires us to do is, is file a balanced budget, and then the way our policies work is that, so for our general fund, and I apologize, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but say it's 270 million for the year. So that would give the city manager the ability to spend the money within that budget, um, not to exceed that $270 million.
Right.
So for instance, um, I know in prior years, um, and this may be not the best example, but we've been given maybe a donation of, say, $25,000 to go to the police department to be used for something in particular. So, um, we put that $25,000 revenue inside our general fund, it's above and beyond what our original budget was, and then we, um, the city manager has the authority to spend, you know, to allow the police department to spend that additional 25,000, um, since it was, you know, a dedicated donation. And so that's what this paragraph is kind of outlining here. Um, the other piece of it too, and I know we talked about some of this during budget, is, um, in certain years, um, our overtime budgets in some of our larger departments inside our general fund have been overspending their budget. And instead of bringing a budget amendment back for anytime that's occurring, our other departments that have been underspending their budgets are, um, absorbing that overall.
So I, I think this is pretty core to what we've walked through over the budget process and how we're trying to work really well together to make sure that fund balances are identified, uh, CIP projects, fund balances, things like that come back. So I'm curious, counsel, and, and also Mr. City Manager, like, with, with this in here, would it be more in line with our charter to have, "With advisement and consent of counsel, city manager can, or city manager shall?" And so what I'm, what I'm concerned with in this language, if I was just reading it and I was the city manager, I would say that in any given fund, um, I, the city manager, have the ability to take increased revenues or, uh, cost overruns and to offset those from in, well, I shouldn't say internal, but within that fund from perhaps department to department would be the right way to say that. And so I think what we are driving at, or have been driving at, and counsel, you can redirect if you want, but you're bringing all of those department revenues, you're bringing all of those cost recovery, so golf is, you know, trying to pay for golf, and we're doing all this work on the front end on a budget, but then we hand it over and we run through the whole year, we never really get an accounting. So if you have a cost overrun in a department and you're offsetting that with a savings from another department because they both reside in the same general fund, um, I, I'm curious if it wouldn't work better, more in line with kind of the direction we're going, that counsel is under advise, or counsel is able to advise and consent. That's the closest that I could get to a true net-zero fund balance. Um, and then I would read, you know, section five here also, "At the close of each fiscal year, the unencumbered appropriation balance will lapse or revert to the undesignated fund balance. However, the unencumbered appropriation balance in the capital projects fund does not do that. It doesn't lapse over." So that really speaks to, um, the city manager's authority of, of, you know, here's the budget, go and run it for the full year, we'll just take it up as a budget item again next year. We're not really looking back, we're not doing periodic reviews, and we're not truly amending that budget, and, and you can correct that. Are, are we doing budget amendments when we're over budget?
If we're over budget in total by fund, we do bring budget amendments, and we'll be, we usually do that closer to when our audit is occurring because there's so many year-end adjustments that are going through. Um, I will say that, um, that last section there, the, um, when it says that it'll lapse and revert to the undesignated fund balance, those are the amounts that we bring you all each year as one-time capital spending for the next year. So that would be any, um, underspending on your overall expense budget, or any additional revenues that were collected beyond the revenue budget, those automatically go back into reserves, and then during the next budget process, we bring it back to city council and say, "What do you want to do with these? Here's our recommendation on some capital projects that can be done, and that's y'all's pro, um, time to weigh in on those things."
That's a great example of where my mind gets totally lost. So keep in mind, uh, we fought for weeks now to find monies that are reoccurring in our general fund, and so now these are taxable items that we're depending on in either sales tax or property tax. If they're coming back to that fund balance, unencumbered, and they're getting kicked over to capital projects, what we're being told is, is, well, those monies are one-time spends. So how do you break that apart i- in, in that general fund?
Well, because, for instance, um, I'll just use an example, it's maybe not a great example, but, um, so your police department currently has 30 positions open?
Mm-hmm.
And so if we had savings in a year because we didn't spend for those 30 positions, we would bring that back and say, "Council, what do you want to spend that savings on those 30 positions for in a future year? But you can't reallocate it recurring because we're planning to hire those 30 positions." So these reoccurring dollars are already earmarked on something that we're planning to do. Now, every year's different, I mean, we have, I, I don't, I don't know, we have, I don't know, 3,000 employees or so, 2,700 employees, and so we constantly are having turn during the year. And so when you have turn in positions, it does create savings, but we do budget as if we're going to stay filled the entire year. So you can't take those savings and say, "Well, now I'm going to count on those every single year going forward, let's put it into raises."
Right. But think about how much smoother and better budget sessions would work with future mayor and councils, when we have a true accounting department by department, much like you've been doing in these actuals, but also it's going to isolate those savings that are coming out. Well, why did we save that? It, it doesn't always come from a fund balance because you didn't fill 30 positions. Sometimes you didn't spend as much on equipment or, or repairs or whatever because you've replaced all that equipment, and you could depend on that moving forward. So with the, the intention of being able to offset this issue that we have coming, which is labor costs are going to continue to increase, we're going to continue to need more money to run the city, it's either raise taxes or find it within your budget. What I'm saying this financial policy does is it kind of equals, uh, or I'm sorry, it kind of leads towards, um, city manager just equalizing all those monies within a fund?
Mm-hmm.
And then us having to, you know, extrapolate them and pull them all back apart at the end of the year, wouldn't the accounting be so much easier if we just did it throughout the year? So as he's under budget on this, or as the projection is over on that, we're recognizing, "Oh, no, we're way over budget and overtime on police. We're going to be over."
Well, and I think a lot of that is not going to occur until you're right at the end of your fiscal year. And just keep in mind, if you wanted to do it on a line item basis, I mean, there are thousands of lines of accounts inside your general fund alone. And so now, if you wanted to do it on a department-by-department basis, you know, we could certainly discuss something like that.
I think I'm even willing to do it on a fund basis. Like, I would like to do it on a department basis. Maybe that's not the, the easiest task, but then with the charter being the advise, with advise and consent from counsel, he could even do it on the fund balance, right? But then you would at least have those fund balances by fund. Now, they would be way better if, I think, city manager was working from a departmental balance.
And, and please know that in your audited financials every year, you've got, um, a budget versus actual comparison for your entire general fund, which is where the bulk of your operations are occurring. And it does walk you by department, and it has the major categories like, um, salaries and benefits, supplies, contractual capital, and then it shows you a total budget for the year, and then it shows if they went over or they were under for the year, and then it gives you a net total. So that, all of that is inside your audited financial statements as well. And I know we go over that with the audit committee, but it's something that we could maybe do like a separate presentation on if counsel wanted to go on a department-by-department basis.
And I, I know this counsel took a pretty strong stand with, you know, our good friend, Mr. Nelson in the back in the EDC. We totally rearranged the budget, eh, so that there wasn't an ability to move from one department to the next department, one line item to the next line item. We, we took an exercise there so that counsel would be in, in kind of that checks and balances, uh, relationship. Uh, this financial policy almost speaks the opposite of what I think we just spent the year doing. So I'm concerned without additional language, how would this financial policy read, you know, in line with? So with advise and consent, I think city manager needs to be able to go and run the budget and, and, and let departments run, but then as he's receiving those numbers back, this policy speaks as though he just makes a decision to offset, you know, a million-dollar cost overrun here with a million-dollar savings there, and it never comes back to counsel unless you're quick enough to catch it on an audited financial statement, which, when I sat down with you, was probably 300 pages, and I, I had two hours to go through it. So I mean, like, not, not exactly the opportunity for me to, to really dig into estimates versus actuals. And then that particular line item of fund balance wasn't even discussed, I, I don't think, in that meeting. So thinking forwardly for city manager and counsel, you know, having to learn on the job and, and how much more expensive things can get, the goal here is to identify monies that reoccur in this given budget so that we can pay our staff what they need to be paid so that we can have the highest quality core services.
And I think that's, um, a really good point, um, and I think that's something that we do walk through with counsel when we're going through the budget process. That's why we had, what was it, three or four years of actual and then two years' worth of budget, so y'all could see the trends by department, by line item on those things. I just, I don't want, um, I mean, counsel can just direct us however y'all choose, but this, this could be a huge, huge time, um, consuming project. If, if counsel wants to get in and start looking at every single line item, um, you know, it, it could certainly be a very large task.
But let's make sure we don't put an objection out there that we don't have. So there, there's not an objection on the table to go to a line item by line item understanding of a $570 million budget. The proposal is to potentially do a department-by-department se- segregation-
Okay.
-so that we don't just put it in a fund and allow city manager to move from one department to the next. I, I don't feel like that's fair to my department, uh, directors, my chiefs.
Okay.
You know, they're working these budgets, they're holding themselves accountable, and then at the end of the year, do they even know, you know, if they're under budget? Did that offset somebody else's? And so the team-building exercise, I think, is working itself out during the year because you are running a valid budget and, and maintaining reserves and everything year over year. It's just the, um, the distribution of that back to this counsel that this policy doesn't speak to. So I would be in favor, counsel, of getting some feedback from you guys of, "Could we put some additional language in here that instructs staff not only to give these department-by-department updates, um, to city manager, but also allow city manager to bring those back for advisement and consent?"
Well, I think, I mean, to this number five, this unencumbered appropriation balance, there's obviously something that already exists, and it only, it only happens one time a year.
That's correct.
This isn't throughout the year-
No.
-because we don't know until we're at the end of the fiscal year.
That's correct.
So this already exists.
That's correct.
And at that point in time, those dollars are not recurring dollars, they've become one-time dollars-
Yes, sir.
...because it was a savings or a cost savings.
Yes.
Whatever it was, it's cost savings. So if this already exists, we don't have to do anything extra, right? I mean, it's already coming to you to say, "Hey, this department was under, this, whatever." Um, I think what Mayor's getting at is that, that maybe it's a little more collaborative. I think what's given, and maybe a misunderstanding, but you're saying, "Well, I don't really like the fact that city manager can just reallocate these funds as he sees fit." You would like the advice and consent to say, "Hey, guys, here's the report that already exists. I don't, we're not going line by line. That's craziness."
Yeah.
Um, but here's the report that already exists, here's all the departments, this is where cost overruns occurred, I guess, and then, uh, savings occurred. Is, is that what you're saying? Like, you just want to see that to say, "Where were we?"
I think it's simple language, and very much so in a collaborative effort of, you know, city managers receiving all of the good news, "Hey, we revenueed more than we thought." Um, and- And you've got the bad news, well, we're over budget and overtime here or there. He's working alongside a council in the public with public overview and oversight so that as you're putting those check registers up and everybody's following along, this part of the accountability to the budget is working itself out because you don't know what you're walking over. Maybe there are some really good practices and protocols of how did we get that million-dollar savings, right? What did we change? Well, maybe we wanna adopt that and do it again. Maybe we're starting to see that trend pay off. There's a lack of communication coming back this way. Once the budget goes to you guys, you guys work it and you're just living with it to fiscal year-end, I feel. Now, that's not always true. But then with this financial policy, I would read that and say, that's exactly what we just directed him to do. That's not my intention. My intention would be for the collaboration from staff, directors, ACMs, along with council oversight to continue to move those monies around. So that if the idea is, hey, we wanna go and put these into streets because we feel like you guys have directed us to do more streets, council gets the opportunity to say, wait a second. Donny's done such a great job, the streets actually are doing, you know, better and we're catching up. We feel like Parks and Rec is where that million dollars needs to go. We feel like seniors is where that money needs to go. Whatever we would be doing, there's that opportunity more than just one time per year if this is the way that this can work out in the field.
So I have a thought, if I might. Council knows, and I know this year we've been trying to catch up on it. We've gone through a software change. But we are sending out those monthly budget versus actual kind of large overview of the city financials on a monthly basis. What we could do is look at preparing something that breaks down like the general fund by department that would show like their budget for the year and how much they've spent up to that point. So maybe council could keep kinda an eye on department-by-department. I mean, that way it would be coming out every single month. But you're not, well, and I was gonna say, and you're not gonna know the whole lot until you get to September.
I'm not getting into the nuts and bolts of how those reports are coming back. What I'm trying to speak to is the financial policy.
The only thing that matters is at the end of the fiscal year. Because there could be a good purchase. There could be a big purchase at the end of the year where we're looking at a department going, wow, wait, they're way under budget. But yet, there's a huge purchase coming that we don't know. And so the only number that matters would be at the end of the year. We can't make adjustments mid-year.
No, you do. This is a living document. Your budget that you just passed is a living document.
We can.
And we can amend it at any time, and you may have to. You may have a circumstance that happens within your city. This financial policy talks about that. Sales tax comes in less than five percent, it's right back up here. So this is very much in line with.
We can, but I don't know that it's always appropriate to do it.
Well, I think it's always appropriate for council to hold to policies that we, you know, live up to. This policy speaks, I think, to just a overall fund balance being, you know, appropriated from one department to the next without any actual accounting.
But departments don't have fund balance. So they're part of a fund, and so everybody is a portion of that. And we don't budget for fund balance.
But I may be misusing the term fund balance, but every department has a budget and every department comes in under or over that budget.
That's correct. So they would have a net.
They're gonna have a net gain or loss.
Yep, yep. Or a budget, a positive or negative budget variance is what they would have each year.
So let me ask council, because I think Mrs. Stor's done a great job of laying out, like, well, we could help here, we could help there. Council, am I alone on this item? Do you guys like the financial policy as it is? Do you want some additional language in here as it speaks to the relationship per the policy, which is a hundred percent your lane, with the amount of authority you'd like the city manager to exercise during the year?
I don't see our need to get involved in every time we wanna move a dollar from one account to another. I mean, that's what we'd be here all day doing it. I mean, given the flexibility, I think the question's not so much, you know, about the. I have no problem with what the policy says right now. There's lots of times, to me, our time to check everything, I mean, we can check it ongoing, you know, whether it's in here or not. I think any good city council manager, any good city manager's gonna keep council informed about that. But I don't, I just think we're getting into a little bit too deep into the minutia. I think it's our job to give a large direction and all these things if we wanna give direction to the city manager on how to do it. And, but I think our time is at the budget to be able to apply and provide that blueprint. And I don't necessarily see the need for us to get involved and, you know, give the city manager the freedom to manage these various funds as he sees fit, as long as he stays within the budget.
For the majority of the time, when it comes to accounts coming over or under for lines, you're not gonna know till August, September. You, we can speculate that the department's gonna come in under, but you don't know, there one water breakaway or there one vehicle engine breakaway or something. Now, sometimes like overtime, police, okay, you can kinda see it coming. And so, but, but it's some of the council's aware that we're not budgeting overtime like we should. The council's aware of that. So we already know we're gonna come in over and overtime but try to come in under other places. And so, but most of these things, you don't know line item or department until you're at the end there. So while there are some times we do know this ahead of time, most time we don't. So is that true, Laura?
Yeah, that's true. You know, once we get kinda close to that fiscal year-end, and I'll be honest, we have a lot of items that come in after our technical fiscal year-end that have to be accrued back into it. And so even after September, there could be entries that come in that actually push a department on over budget. So yes, it would be coming at the very end of a fiscal year or the beginning of the next fiscal year, looking back into it.
Obviously, if I'm aware of anything significant, then I could definitely have the council aware. It's one thing that I think I would normally do anyways. So if I'm aware of anything significant, that's, council, this is gonna rock your budget. And I'd be bringing that to you all. So otherwise, it's just day-to-day stuff. I gotta buy another box of towels over here kinda thing. And we went one box over. That stuff, I don't know if I wanna bring that to the council every time I can. But that's not really the intent, I think, of council manager.
Yeah, and I definitely am not proposing that. So we're not talking about a box of towels. We're definitely not talking about line items. The only thing I was proposing was a departmental.
You brought up streets. I think it's a good example to use streets. We don't hit the biggest part of our budget until we get in the middle of the summer. So we're gonna show that we're under budget all of those other months, but that money is not available. We don't know how many winter storms we're gonna have. We don't know how many, how much overtime we're gonna have associated with that and then our projects in the summer, so.
Okay. No, I appreciate the point. Councilman?
So, you know, trying to understand what you're asking and what the practice is. So when we pass the budget, we give that authority to the city manager to oversee how monies are used, right? So, but what you're asking, I think, is that what we don't know during the course of the year, we don't know. And that maybe that communication piece, whether it's put into the policy or it's, as you said, if there's something major, you're going to come to us and say, here's what we have, so that we're not caught by surprise. And I don't know if that needs to be put into policy so that it's clear on roles. But I really think that once we pass that budget, we do give, we kind of acquiesce control over to the city manager.
And I definitely think you should, and you do feel that. But you are giving that budget either as kind of a lump sum overall, general fund this, airport that, and then no checks and balances along the way. Or you can give that budget as, no, this is how it breaks down from all of these different departments that make up the general fund. And we would like to continue to advise and consent in the way that these things are funded. So I'll give you an example. You get a agenda and it now says, is this department, or is this?
Budgeted or not, yeah.
Is this budgeted in and from where? And so, is this item in the budget? And it says, yes. And then where from? Well, general fund, okay. So what you would really be looking at there is if you had a specific department budget from a department that was over budget, let's say, or department request from a department that's over budget, there would just be one more opportunity for the city manager to say, yes, but I am covering that from savings under, you know, department X. And so, oh, okay, well, we are under budget on department X and that covers this cost. I do think that's our role. I would challenge any of us to get with a citizen that doesn't believe that is your role. They think you are way, way into the budget and that you understand anything over fifty thousand dollars. And no, they don't believe that it's a line item by line item, but I think they do believe that when we're giving the budget, we're paying attention as the year goes through.
But we would have that discussion. That's the whole point of us asking that that be put on our agendas. And in that case, your example would say, no, it's not a part of the budget. Then it is our job to say, well, city manager, where's this money coming from? Oh, I moved it from here. That's when we have the discussion.
But we have a policy that doesn't read that way.
But we have, we have an agenda that says differently. So regardless of what.
Well, we have a policy that matches the agenda then, would be my main statement.
But we have, we have the fifty thousand, correct?
Yes.
We have the fifty thousand. So are you saying anything under fifty thousand?
No, no, I'm saying fifty thousand and over. I'm just saying this policy reads as though anything in the general fund is at the sole discretion of the city manager to spend and move around and additional revenues.
But by state law, that's not allowed. Because state law requires, and state law's upped it to a hundred thousand at this point. However, our city policies are anything over fifty thousand comes to y'all, period.
And that's policy.
That is policy and state law, yes, sir.
A hundred, but policy fifty.
But let's state that. It says expenditures may not legally exceed appropriations at the fund level for each legally adopted annual operating budget. And so that's the totality of the state law is the fund, right? So like, what you're saying is, is that city manager per state law brings things that are in excess of fifty thousand dollars.
That are fifty thousand or more, yes.
All I'm saying is, is that this policy reads as though that those items are still gonna need to be approved. We just don't have a financial policy that references where they're funded from. It just says they're within the overall fund. And what I'm asking for is the breakdown of that either departmentally.
So you would like us to add in here that the city manager will ensure that all agenda or all council approval items have reference to where those funds were budgeted and if that budget is available?
I'm only recommending putting something in language here that's more in line with our charter. It's as simple as, with advisement and consent, city manager may transfer appropriation balances from one expenditure account to another within a department or fund.
Mayor, for clarification, the charter doesn't say advising consent for budget. It only says advising consent for hiring and firing. So, but with this, we can pass a policy to whatever effect you'd like. And so I'm just saying the charter doesn't speak to that language. And we would need, I'd need more clarification on advising consent. It should be more like council either does or does not approve. Because advising is very vague and very hard for me to interpret.
But I think what we're saying is, is you guys are doing this in practice, right? Per the agenda, you know, items that are coming. But then the policy still doesn't match that to me. Because if I read the line, city manager may also increase revenue and expenditure budgets by corresponding amount when unanticipated outside funding is received per approval of the council. That's all I'm asking for it to say. Like, it doesn't say per approval of the council. But what you're saying is, is if he had those revenues come in, he would go ahead and bring them in and say, mayor and council, here's where the additional revenues are. It exceeds fifty thousand dollars. I'd like to pay CVB this much money for them to go out and do that out of, you know, fund X or whatever.
Yeah, we would need to specify, because what if sales tax comes in two dollars over budget? So is that two dollars over the budget need to be brought to the council? Or is, are you talking more like, we got a hundred thousand dollar grant? Or we got a fifty thousand dollar this? And so it's, because, I mean, our revenues, whether it's billing permitting fees or franchise fees or sales taxes, those are hard to, I mean, those are guesses. And so we would need to specify, is that extra beyond the budget to be brought? Or is it actually specific categories like donations and grants or a whole new revenue stream?
Let me ask a follow-up question and we could move on. Next line, city council must approve revisions that alter total expenditures for a fund.
Yes.
I am on line, or section four, so right here, number four.
Yes.
Is that still on yours?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So all I'm saying is, is city council must approve revisions that alter expenditures of a given department.
But you wanna put a dollar amount?
Say again?
You wanna put a dollar amount on it? I mean, we don't need to approve every, it gets crazy. Like, we've already got the fifty thousand. Do we choose a dollar amount? Because that creates so much work and time if it's ten dollars. Like you said, you're not worried about a deal of towels. But if you put that in there, that's what that's saying.
Well, no, that's not what that's saying. And so I think, I think maybe I'm making it more difficult than I would like it to be. Or maybe we are making it more difficult. If we don't have a vote for it, like, I'm good to move on. If council is reading this and you guys are comfortable with the language, then I think we call the item up and move forward. I'm not comfortable with the language, but I may be the only one because we're not operating according to this language.
Well, we are. And so, but let me say that I'm always accountable to the council that, okay, if the council wants to know, why did a department go over budget? That is always on the table to be asked. And so, anyone individually or as a council, you could say, Grayson, why did Parks, or why did police, or why did it go over? Now, I never can always point to one thing because usually a combination of many things. So it's hard to say that this one thing, six months from now, would take us over budget. Well, I don't know that one thing today will be that thing takes over budget. I won't know this stuff until August, September down the road that in combination cumulative, these things took us over budget. So it's, yeah.
So what you're, in reading that, let me just make sure. What's giving you a lot of heartburn is, like you said, this was like what happened at the EDC.
Correct.
It was, we're moving money because the way this is worded, it says you can move money within the fund as long as it doesn't exceed, you know.
From department to department, city manager has the right without.
To move it.
Advising council. Now, I'm not saying you're not, you may be doing it. I'm just saying the policy speaks that if he chose to, he can move money from department to department and not advise you. And he didn't break any policy.
Right, because it says the city council.
He has to bring it to council if it's over fifty. So y'all are gonna know about it anyways.
We have to, so over fifty, he has to tell us.
Then why would the policy not read in line with that? We're gonna approve it on the fifty anyway.
Because if it's still within overall budget, that's what this is speaking to.
What's the purpose then in moving the money around from department to department?
Well, and we don't, we honestly don't move money from department to department. It's just at the end of the year, your, you know, public safety may overspend their overtime. And so.
I feel like we need to, you know, strike number four then. If we don't have an intention of doing it, then why would we put it in our financial policy?
I don't understand what you're saying.
If we don't move money from department to department and we don't have cost overruns that we cover with savings from other departments.
Yeah, but we don't move budget money around. So if the police department goes over five hundred thousand and Parks Department goes under budget five hundred thousand, we don't move budget.
Well, then I think I'm good because, like, I'm getting these budget requests as they come on the agenda to approve over fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
I just don't want a financial policy that speaks against that.
This does not speak against that.
Okay, city manager may transfer appropriation balances from one expenditure account to another within a department or fund.
Yes.
We don't do that.
So we don't, we have before, but we don't normally move any budget money around. It's just they spend it as.
One example may be a staff position moving from one department to another.
Yes, that is true, yeah.
So that money is moved because a staff member paid up.
Yeah, but we normally don't say, hey, Parks, stop spending your budget because we need to move your budget money over here to cover police.
I would ask council, if there's a need for number four in here, I've already covered all my other issues in the reading, you've got it. This is my only issue. I'd love to accept or adopt this financial policy update and strike number four under budget process.
So would it give you more comfort if we put the fifty thousand in there? That's what it sounds like to me, is if we put the fifty thousand in four, say, they can do all this.
Up to fifty thousand? So city manager may transfer appropriation balances from one expenditure account to another within a department or a fund, up to fifty thousand?
Right. Would that give you more comfort?
I'd be okay with that because that's already his right, you know, to spend.
I mean, because if we don't do it, like you're saying, we don't do this on a regular basis at all. It's an employee or something like that. But if it's over fifty, then we have to ask. But it's like, it's not done anyway. If that gives you comfort, I mean, does that-
So what we would be looking at, what that would look like in, you know, in practice is at the end of the year, um, you know, and again, I'm just using this for, you know, example purposes, but police overtime came in, you know, say five hundred thousand over budget. What we would do is we would have to, we would, that's over fifty thousand. Um, that is not an expenditure that's going to come up to y'all that's over fifty thousand though. But because the line item went over fifty thousand, we would be bringing you all a budget amendment saying, you know, parks is going to fund this and library is going to fund that much. And, you know, legal department funds that much and we're going to move budget from all these departments to cover that five hundred thousand. Is that what you're looking for?
I, I think that's what we've been asking to do at budget workshops every year. Bring us the actuals, show us how much under budget you are, um, you're giving your best guess.
And we do bring that every year, but now you're asking for a formal amendment to occur where y'all vote on it. We can do that if that's what you would like.
Which I think, when are we amending that budget? If we're not moving the money from, you know, fund balance to fund balance or from department to department, we're just running it, you know, upside down here and right side up over here. And all you're doing is netting out the total. And as long as you stay within the grand total-
Yes, sir. That's the way these financial policies have read historically, yes sir.
You're within the policies, right.
Yes.
This just speaks differently, so I, I would, I would ask-
This speaks to that.
Uh, well, I would ask to strike number four, and I think this does speak to that.
So-
Oh, we need the ability to do that if we need to.
We don't do that. So do we need the ability to do it if we don't do it?
But we might need to.
No, I don't think you do.
Well, and again-
Do you need the ability to do this?
I'm sorry, I'm not following you, mayor.
So i- if you're five hundred thousand dollars over budget on overtime in police, and they've done their best and it's great and we all know about it, and he's telling us, you don't create a formal amendment in the budget.
We do not. And so what we look at is when we bring budget amendments to council, and again, this is historical practice. If y'all want to do something different going forward, we can. But we say general fund budget was two hundred and seventy million, we came in at two sixty-five, we're good. Now, police might have been over, fire might have been under, you know, parks might have been over, whatever. We look at it in total. Then we say, here's water and sewer and here's where they're at. Well, actually, and we look at the legally adopted budgets like public health and WIC, PIDS, all of those. If they in total go over budget, so PIDS are a great example. You know, they may overspend on their water account for the year, but they underspend in repair and maintenance. And so overall, they're within budget, so we don't bring a budget amendment. But if they overspend their total budget, we bring a budget amendment to council.
I'm not proposing a line item budget amendment. I'm proposing a department budget amendment. And I would like that. I mean, I think every council across the state of Texas would like that. Because what we're doing then is we're identifying monies that we can help to resource the community in providing services into the next year. And so, yes, I think if you're under budget in, say, library, um, then yeah, that's all we're asking for on the, on the budget workshop anyway. This just puts it in practice in the financial policy, which financial policy should speak to your intention and your practices moving forward. It feels like we have a practice of like, hey, bring it to us at the end of the year, but then this policy speaks different.
This policy speaks exactly to what we've been doing in practice. But if you would like us to start bringing budget amendments by a department, we can revise this language and bring it back where budget amendments are required if we overspend in a department.
I would love, I would love a budget that was a true net zero fund balance budget. And that is how we run, you know, the business, uh, project to project, trade to trade, business to business. But then in the government accounting, I've kind of understood, hey, you can't always get it the way you have it in the, in the private sector. So on the public side, if we need to not have it to that finite detail, but have a financial policy that speaks to advising consent from council, yeah, that's what I'm asking for. Or striking number four. But I'm, I'm not asking, I guess, all of the room. I'm, I'm really just asking you three gentlemen, in, you know, do you, do you want to accept the financial policies the way they've been amended? Or would you be more comfortable like I would be in just speaking to either the fifty thousand dollars or speaking to like a, an actual departmental budget true-up, which is really what I'm saying?
And we can do that.
I, I, I think we, we get that at the budget time. I, I, I don't know, I feel like we're trying to solve a problem that I don't really know exists. Uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the wording in here.
Real good. Councilman? I was going to let you go.
Oh, that's fine. I'm, I'm okay with four. I think adding the fifty thousand would probably help, give you some comfort. I think in five, um, I think that's what you did this year anyway. Um, but again, to give you comfort, if it just add in there, the, I don't know if you love advising consent, but, um, that it's just more of a collaboration versus that you have at will, you can take all that money and reallocate it. I think that's what you're having an issue with. Or did you pass on five? Are you good with five?
No, I think I can leave five alone.
So you're going to, okay.
I mean, I think-
Well, I'm good with that. I'm not going to start anything else up.
Yeah, I, I think four is probably the, the one that I have the biggest heartburn.
Okay, but would you be okay adding the fifty thousand dollar limit? Would that give you, would that give you comfort?
I would. I think that Mrs. Stores is already leading us to like a true-up accounting in, in these actuals. Um, all we're really missing is kind of a mid-year look, which I don't know if, has the city ever done a mid-year look?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't know why we're not doing that as a practice. I think the mid-year look would give directors, staff, ACMs a great leg up on what else can we do better? What are we already doing really well? The whole purpose of this is not to find money for a special project. We've got money in projects sitting out there. The whole purpose of this is to find monies built in that existing tax rate that we just raised on our taxpayers and steward it the best we can in order to pay labor that's adequate to keep the city staffed and to keep police and fire and, and, and the competitive nature that we need. So I'm only working this hard on a financial policy to put more money in the employees' pockets ultimately.
The challenge is you wouldn't know anything mid-year, because each department's different. The staffing changes, the projects change. You really won't know till the end of the year.
Okay, and I, I can understand that. I have projects that if I say, hey, this project takes twelve months to do, where are we at in the budget? Well, we may lose a hundred thousand dollars, but right now, I can tell you that this, this, and this has come in on time, on budget or over. That mid-year isn't a finality, I get it. But I, I'd challenge any director underneath you guys to say, I don't know where I'm at for the year. I'm halfway through it. You know, give me another six months. Like they know whether they're staffed, they know whether they're, they're, they're seeing chronic cost overruns or they're having large issues, right?
They do, but they're, but they're also reactive to what's happening, especially all of ours and, and in my group. We don't know how many water leaks we're going to have. We don't know how many emergencies we're going to have. We, we don't know those things. So the boat, the money is there when we need it, and we won't know what we've used until the end of the year.
Definitely not asking for a reallocation. We're not trying to reallocate those monies. We're willing to leave them for the full year. City manager per number four has the ability to move those monies around to offset cost overruns on this. So I'm just saying if we didn't have that, then it puts it back on council. Do we want to take money out of Donnie's accounts mid-year to go and offset a cost overrun from another account? We do have items that change during the year, correct, Mr. Path?
Like- You do have, I'm sorry, say that again?
Yeah, the items that come up during the year, and this speaks to your ability to handle those items without needing to come to council.
That's the point of four. It is, is that things happen daily. So it's, it's, that's what you hired me for, is to handle the day-to-day affairs of, we have seventeen potholes today. I've got seventeen dogs running around. And so it's just things happen daily. So it's, 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 budgets are a guess for, for next year. So it's, I have the ability to, to adjust to meet the needs of the community that you've tasked me under ordinance to fol- to follow.
I would definitely be more comfortable with a fifty thousand dollar, uh, you know, line item insert here in number four and move forward, um, just capping that. And then if the law changes to a hundred, then we could amend this to a hundred.
Well, we can, we can be more restrictive, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And right now-
We can do whatever we want, okay?
Yeah, because state law has already changed to a hundred thousand.
I think the conversation is productive in like a mid-year look may not be the, the best look, because it is government and you guys struggle with having like, it's seasonal, right? You're not going to do a true six-month look, so, um-
But that's why we're giving you the, the monthly, um, reports. We're showing you what, but as I mentioned earlier, we could do that by department if that would help.
And I think that would help greatly, because that is the true-up that, that we could track.
Are you wanting, are you wanting that to come to us? Because my thought is-
The departments are getting the information. We're, we're working with them on that.
That's the ACM's job, that's the director's job. It's not the board's job. I don't want to see that. I mean, I, I want to hold them accountable at the end of the year.
I agree with you, but you have a line here and it's called over budget. And so what you should be getting, in my opinion, is when you're over budget, it should be brought to you.
Well, I agree, but we're going to get that.
No, you're not going to get that per number four. You don't ever go over budget. You just constantly work it.
Not on a line. On a line, we go over budget. You're right, but on the fund, we don't go over budget.
Not on a fund. It never comes to you as long as it works out within the, the grand fund. So what I'm saying is, is what you're, what you're telling me you want is when, when we have a problem and we're over budget, we want to know it. That doesn't speak to that. And so what, what you're saying is, is hey, I don't want you to bring me every box of rags that you have a problem with. Nobody's saying that, because that's not over budget. That's in your budget anyway. This is the same conversation we have with the EDC on their budget. And, and so we worked it out with them and they're not bringing us every box of paper clips to go and buy.
Yeah, as long, as long as I understood that, I'll probably bring these things to you in August, September next year. Man, unless something big happens, the department goes over in June. Yes, because that's, that's when department typically go over. And so, because we won't know until close to the end of the fiscal year. Now, obviously, if a department were to go over in April, then obviously that, that would speak to that.
Big problem.
But you won't, you won't, we won't know this stuff, because everything's cumulative until August, September next year.
I understand totally. And I think that the, the red, the red light doesn't alert until you go over budget. But right now, I think I feel like we don't ever set the red light off, because department from department doesn't get a true-up, except for what we've been doing on the budget workshops, which we're guessing and it's a best guess.
Well, and we're working, we're providing information to our departments that we may not be giving you guys that detailed of information throughout the year. And we, I mean, if that's something that y'all want to look for, we can. I mean, it's hundreds of pages long, but we can certainly work on doing that, if that's something council wants.
Um, I definitely would like to look at like what that looks like with you. But, but for this cause here today, I don't want to delay action on this. Is council okay with amending number four under budget process? Or does council want a motion for, you know, as it sits?
Well, what would you, what, what language would you want to put in there to amend it?
Okay, so I would propose, um, city manager may transfer appropriation balances from one expenditure account up to a nu- or to another within a department or fund up to fifty thousand dollars. City manager may also increase revenue and expenditure budgets by a corresponding amount when unanticipated outside funding is received up to fifty thousand. Um, you'll have to change city council must approve revisions that alter total expenditures of a fund, um, you know, to include the language that city council must give approval on agenda item individualized for the cost overrun. Okay, those are, those are my changes, if you guys are good with them.
Because we're, we're, we're talking about the policy, and I, I kind of agree with you. We create policy so that the people that are in charge know how they're supposed to act.
Right.
And here you've got two, twofold. You have what, uh, the, the, the party that takes care of business on a daily basis. And then you have the party that oversee, kind of oversees it. And when it comes to the budget, we should take that seriously. However, in a policy, you can't cover everything, right? Because there's always going to be those one-offs that happen, um, that, oh, wait a second, we didn't think of that. Now what? Because we've hampered this by right, by putting this into the policy, it hampers us from doing anything that it needs to be done now. So that's why I'm just, I want to make sure that if we do amend this, that it doesn't affect how you operate on a daily basis if an emergency does happen. That's, I, I, it's a, it's a fine line that we walk, if that makes sense.
Well, I'm comfortable here if you guys are.
With the amended language?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I can go with that. I think that it, it, it gives us enough room that you can operate on a da- on, uh, the city on a daily basis.
Can we bring this back and just put it on a consent with the revised language? That way we don't have any issues, take no action on it today.
Um, well, this is a resolution and, um, our new policy says there's two readings of it. So, I mean, we could, you all could make a motion to, um, accept the policy with the revisions discussed. And then we could put the revisions in for consent on the next one, or you can table this and then we can do two readings of it going forward, however y'all would like.
Well, I'm comfortable if, uh, if the revisions that, that, you know, I've discussed with council, you guys can put those in for the second and final reading. We can take action on it today, just motion as amended. Councilman, can I get you to make a motion?
You can. Uh, I move to adopt resolution number oh nine, oh nine, two, five, dash, one, with amended as discussed.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, I appreciate the, uh, the conversation and consideration on that. Onto item nine F. Ms. Stores, you are up again, venue district.
Yes, um, so the next several items, we'll, we're going to be going through, um, some item, some resolutions that are approving some of our component unit budgets. Now, as a reminder, please note that these entities have advisory boards that have already considered these budgets and are bringing this up to you all for consideration. So the first one here is the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District. Um, so just a quick, um, background on this. Um, back in the late nineties, um, our citizens voted to approve two different projects. One out at the Tri-State Fairgrounds area and one is the north end of the Civic Center. And they voted to fund those projects with a two percent additional hotel occupancy tax and a five percent car rental tax. In doing that, it formed the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District. So it's kind of a combined entity with the city and Potter County. And so its run, its funding sources are solely from that two percent, um, hotel occupancy tax and then the vehicle rental tax. So the budget highlights for this upcoming year, um, is there is a total of just, um, under four point six million dollars in revenue anticipated. Of that, um, just under one point three million is anticipated to come from vehicle rental taxes and a little over two point seven million is anticipated to come from hotel occupancy tax. On the expenditure side, they're looking to spend, um, or budgeting to spend about four and a half million. On that, um, the large expenditures are made up of the Tri-State lease improvements. So they do have a list of several improvements they're wanting to conduct out at the Tri-State Fairgrounds area. Um, that includes everything from, there's actually a big fence, um, that they're wanting to, um, it's a chain link fence and they're wanting to make it a little bit more appealing and make it a wood fence with some big concrete barriers, because people do apparently run off the road and it protects some of their structures out there. So they're wanting to do that. Um, they're also looking to do some water and wastewater utility improvements out there, um, some internet upgrades, some remodeling and, um, visual installation in the Amarillo National Center foyer, some parking lot improvements and some air conditioning unit replacements. So that's all out at the Tri-State Fairgrounds area, and that's what makes up that one point two million dollars. Um, along with that, um, there is an annual management contract that the venue district pays, um, the Tri-State Fairgrounds Group, uh, to manage the facilities out there related to the Amarillo National Center. So that contract is five hundred thousand dollars for the management contract. And then we have budgeted about two hundred thousand for the property insurance to cover the Amarillo National Center. And I think it ca- it's going to come in a little lower than that, but that gave them, um, ability if that premium came in higher. So seven hundreds for that. Then, um, they do, um, the venue district incentivizes certain events to come out to the Tri-State Fairgrounds area, out to that Amarillo National Center. And there's a whole, um, list of events that they're looking to help incentivize to hold their events at the facility. And that amount is four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, the venue district also pays the city of Amarillo a management contract for three hundred and ninety-eight thousand for our portion of managing the north area there at the Civic Center. We are also looking, and we talked about this during budget, um, we are looking for the venue district to fund nine hundred and eight thousand dollars of improvements over at the Civic Center. And those are made up of four items. One is a fire alarm replacement. The second one is a cooling tower replacement. Um, the third one is IT access points and fiber upgrades. And then the final one is Civic Center Complex Auditorium and Globe News Center audio upgrades. So that nine hundred thousand will be invested in at the Civic Center. I'm probably pointing in the wrong direction, um, but it's all funded by the venue district. Um, so they've authorized that in their budget. Now, there's two outstanding debt issuances still out there at the, um, related to the venue district. And that was to do the projects at the Civic Center and the, um, at the Tri-State Fairgrounds area. And the annual debt service is approximately seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, this was approved, this budget was approved by the venue district on August eighteenth, and it was approved by Potter County Commissioners on August twenty-fifth. So you all are the last- So you all are the last, um, group to approve this budget. Are there any questions that I can answer related to the venue district?
Nope. No, ma'am.
Okay, I move to adopt, uh, resolution zero nine, zero nine, two, five dash two.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Nine G. Nine G is a resolution to, um, approve the 2526 fiscal year budget for the Amarillo Hospital District. Um, so just real quick, the Amarillo Hospital District, that board is appointed by the city of Amarillo. Um, state law mandates that they take care of the indigent care costs for any indigent inside the city of Amarillo and Potter County. And, um, the hospital district used to assess a property tax back until the late nineties. In the late nineties, the hospital district sold, um, Northwest Texas Hospital to United Healthcare Services and has been funding indigent care with the proceeds of that hospital sale since then. So the budget for this next year, um, the total revenue is just a little over 2.8 million with most of that coming from interest income from the remaining proceeds from the sale of the hospital. That interest income is anticipated at 2.4 million. Um, they do, um, hospital district does receive some tobacco settlement proceeds annually. Um, we're anticipating that to be about 425,000 next year, and they receive a small amount, um, in rental income of 27,600. On total expenditures, um, their expenditures are, um, budgeted to be 12.2 million dollars. The largest amount is their indigent care contract. So the hospital district has a contract with United Healthcare Services to provide indigent care services on behalf of the hospital district through the year 2036, and that amount is 7.7 million per year. It will not increase, it stays the same through 2036. Um, I put on here the retirement plan contribution is zero. So when the district owned the hospital, they had a pension plan for the employees. They worked, and, and then when the hospital sold, that became a frozen pension plan. Um, because of what interest rates have done over the past couple of years, uh, the hospital district was able to go ahead and terminate the pension plan and buy insurance annuities, um, through an insurance company to fund all of the retirement benefits of those participants. So all the participants are getting everything they were promised through their pension, but the hospital district is not having to facilitate it or fund it anymore. So they're completely out of the pension business at this point. Um, the next item there, and, and that's a huge win, by the way. The city was having to administer that pension plan, so this is, um, one thing that the city's not having to do anymore. Texas Tech Health Sciences University, um, they have two contracts with hospital district. One is for 100,000 to provide, um, psychiatry services, and then the second one is, um, for 1.6 million to help fund pediatric subspecialty services here in Amarillo. So the hospital district contributes that to Texas Tech. Um, then they pay the proceeds they receive from the tobacco settlement to tobacco-free Amarillo to help with, um, tobacco cessation here, education here in our community. And then, um, hospital district has been funding up to 2 million dollars in public health funding. So to our public health department, the hospital district has been kicking in about 2 million dollars a year. They decided to grow that by, um, 3% this year to 2,600,000, and they're planning to try to grow that annually through the end of their, um, indigent care contract in 2036. So that is a win for the city because that's for putting a little bit more money towards our public health department. The next item is, there is a, um, there is, um, an, a section in state law that allows, um, the hospital district to have a local provider participation fund. And what it does is it, um, the, they assess an amount to all the hospitals in the hospital district area, the Amarillo Hospital District area. Um, they assess that, it can be up to 6% of, um, patient, um, revenues per year, and that 6% is held on to by the hospital district. Then the hospitals work with the state, um, to, um, participate in Medicare eligible programs that have to have, uh, a matching fund, um, put in. So what happens is the hospital district takes the assessments from the hospitals, transfers it to the state, and then it comes back in excess of that to the hospitals. So it's been a huge win. I think it started back in 2017. All of our hospitals do show up and support this program. It does not affect the hospital district at all. They're not putting any money towards this. This is, they are just the facilitators of the actual hospitals funding through the Medicare eligible programs, um, at the state. So the assessments for this year are, are anticipated around 64.3 million, and then the intergovernmental transfers that go to the state that will then come back to the hospitals is anticipated around 64.7 million dollars. This budget was approved by the Amarillo Hospital District Board on August 19th, 2025. Um, one other last reminder is, as I mentioned, the hospital district has not assessed a property tax since the late nineties. Um, the district and, uh, has been watching this money very carefully and the, um, is anticipating the remaining hospital proceeds will last through 2036 when their current indigent care contract expires with universal healthcare system. And at that point in time, they will have to look at starting to assess a property tax rate again. Um, the hospital district, some of those board members have already started working with some of the state representatives because as you guys are very well aware, if a, um, taxing entity makes their operating and maintenance side of their tax rate go higher than 3.5%, it goes to a vote. Well, they're at zero right now. So anything would push them to a vote. So we have been working, and I know Andrew and, and Grayson have been helping too. We've been trying to at least educate our, our representatives, um, knowing that this is coming. The hospital district is very diligent that they do not want to assess property tax rate until absolutely necessary, and they want to keep it at a very reasonable rate, but just enough to cover their required state mandated purpose of covering indigent care services. So I apologize, I know that's a lot. Um, are there questions that I can answer, though, related to this?
Questions?
Nope.
Okay, ask for a motion.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution number nine, oh nine, oh nine, two, five dash three as presented on the agenda.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor on nine G, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine H, Ms. Katrina Owens, how you doing today?
I am good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you. So I have a resolution for the 2526 budget for Center City Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone One. We have total revenue for the year budgeted at 2.3 million, which will include, me breaking things. Of, include 2.2 being from tax, taxing entity participations. Uh, the city will be 714,000 of that. Potter County will be 1,081,000. Amarillo College, we expect 397,000, and then Panhandle Groundwater will be 15,000 of that. We have budgeted total expenditures at 1.7 million. Of that, 610 million, 10,000 will be with community projects. 220 will be with Center City projects. 583,000 will be with tax abatements. And then we have 27,000 in leased computer software. Now, this is one-third of the pro, the cost of that total software is divided by tiers one, tiers two, and then the city. And then we have some debt service at 248,000. This was approved by the tiers one board on August 14th of 2025. The base year for these tax values is 2006, and that was 139.5 million. And 2025 certified values came in at 327.3 million. Now, 400,000 of that is in new improvements.
Any questions? Okay, ask for a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number nine, or zero nine, zero nine, twenty-five, four as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Katrina, item nine, aye.
Now, we have the budget for 2526 for East Gateway Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two. We have total revenues projected at 928,000, of which 895 will be from the taxing participations. The city will be 298 of that. Potter County will be 438,000 of that. Amarillo College will be 160,000, and then Panhandle Groundwater will be 6,000. Total expenditures are projected at 521,000. 200,000 of that will be community projects. 225,000 of that will be tax abatements, and then we see that 27,000 again for the leased software. Now, this was approved by the tiers two board on August 21st of 2025. Third base year is 2016, and that was at 40 million dollars. Now, there was an expansion in 2020 with an additional 1.4 million. And at 2025 certified values, we are at 117.5 million, with 200,000 of that being in new improvements. Do we have any questions on this one?
I don't believe so. Counsel?
I move to adopt resolution zero nine, zero nine, two, five dash five as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine J.
Now, we have the 2526 budget for South Gateway Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Three. Now, we have total revenues at 58,000 for the year. All of this will be from the taxing participations. City is expected to be 22,000. Randall County will be 24,000, and Amarillo College will be 12,000. Total expenditures are expected to come in at 55,600. 48,000 of that will be a reimbursement to a developer, and then 6,300 will be in the audit fees. This was approved by the tiers three board on August 28th of 2025. Third base year is 2022 with 28.8 million now coming in at 2025. They are at 46.2 million with 11.7 million in new improvements for the district.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'd move that, uh, we adopt resolution zero nine, zero nine, two, five, six as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Item nine K, uh, CVB. This is Cashin, our second favorite presenter, Brady Kendrick in here, sorry.
You're actually going to get our Director of Finance, Brayley Beck, today. We, we prepared an actual presentation on budget for you this year, so.
As long as it's 45 minutes, that's fine.
It's 52 minutes long.
Oh, you have to shave it down, Brayley.
Yeah, I don't talk fast at all, ever, so. Do you mind if I just, glass? 30 minutes of that is going to drop with my stuff, sorry. So, yes, I am Brayley Beck, I am the Director of Finance for the, for Visit Amarillo, and I am excited to tell y'all about all of the stuff we have going on this next year. I did want to start out with just giving a few facts from the 2024 tourism statistics that come directly from the State of Texas Governor's Office. We average about 6 million visitors per year, and that spending contributes to a billion dollars direct travel spending. The most important part of that, and there's not really anything else you remember for what I'm going to say, that breaks down to 1,903 dollars per minute, and that's funds directly handed into the businesses from our travelers. And 253.3 million in wages, salaries, and benefits are also generated from travelers, and 91.1 million in direct travel receipt, or direct tax receipts, sorry. And that breaks down roughly to 1,158 dollars per household, and this also, travel also contributes to 8.5 thousand jobs. Also, another little fun fact that's not on here is, uh, travelers contribute to nearly 60% of the sales tax that the city brings in each year. So, I do talk fast as I'm going through this. If you have any questions, please stop me, I'm more than happy to answer. And hopefully y'all had a chance to review the budget that we sent over into your packets. And I'm going to go through these numbers kind of quick just because I don't particularly want this to last an hour. I want to give y'all time to ask questions, and I want to get on to the fun stuff that we have going on this year. So knowing our definite bookings from conferences and sporting events, along with our estimated visitation for Route 66, we're putting our estimated 2526 hot revenues at about 3% over this year's anticipated actuals. Our other funding that we have coming in is fairly conservative with interest income from operating accounts, our certificate of deposit and money market accounts. We also have merchandise sales and bus tours sales from the Texas Route 66 Festival. Our total estimated, sorry, our total estimated revenue for 2526 is just a little under 2.8 million. That does not include the 231,000 reserves requests, that I'll get into a little bit later. Before, do y'all have any questions about our revenue, or good there? Okay. So expenses, administration comes in at 1.37 million, that covers operations, organizational support, rent, legal, staffing, audit fees, all of that fun stuff. Advertising makes up the bulk of our departmental expenses at almost 690,000, and then the remaining expenses come from our key initiatives in arts, film, Route 66, sales, special projects, tourism, servicing. And all of this comes in at about 231,000 and, or over what we're estimating our revenues are, and that's where that reserves request comes in at. Just giving you, um, over/under compared to this year, the largest increase can be seen in advertising, it makes up about 23% of our budget. It's on increase of 60% as we're really leaning strong into Route 66 marketing for the centennial year. And we've increased marketing to visitors as they're driving into market for an already planned stay, and then obviously to get them as they're trying to decide their trips for the year as well. Uh, Route 66 budget itself actually saw a decrease of 51%. That's purely because the festival money that was in there has moved to our tourism foundation for the majority of those expenses. Special projects jumped to a 258% increase, and that is where you will find the national Route 66 initiatives and the grant projects that we've applied for. Uh, overall, this budget is about 13% over last year, 8% of that is just limited to the one-time reserves use. Yeah, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Do y'all have any questions about the expenses now? We good?
Question on your hot tax projections. How conservative is that hot tax projection?
Well...
It's not. You're anticipating a good 100-year birthday, 250-year birthday, corn fairy, you name it.
We're looking at what was actual this year and projecting out the last couple of year, or a couple of months of what we expect the actuals to be, putting a little bit of growth on top of that. We're pretty, um, in line with where I think that you were at 2%. We ended up at 3% with what we're projecting. But yes, we're, we've booked conventions that are theming around the centennial. We expect, um, to uphold, like, we're seeing international, uh, travel not dip the way that the rest of the nation is because of Route 66, and that's not even being in the centennial year yet. So, no, we were not conservative this year, but we also have the reserves and, and the reserve policy to back that if something does happen, and, and we will back off of expenses as well if we need to.
Thank you.
Kind of getting into that question. Um, so this is just a big picture look at our reserves and, and this budget. So our core operations are in balance without the reserves request, and centennial events make this year different, and the reserves will help us bridge that gap. The budget request has almost 270,000 that are just one-time expenditures. We're asking for 231,000 of that to come from our reserves. We were able to cut a few things that'll just come back in our next fiscal year. Um, overall, actually, if we took out just the one-time request, if this was a normal year without all the centennial things, we would actually be looking at about 1,400 under what our estimated revenue is. And kind of a breakdown to understand our reserves, so we use these for emergencies and then as one-time strategic opportunities. We also have a policy to hold a quarter of our expenses in reserves at all times. We currently have nearly 1.4 million dollars in our reserves account and a little over a million held in a certificate of deposit. 100,000 of this is committed to the tourism master planning that we, um, got approval from y'all to use earlier this year. Um, that work is underway, but final billing won't happen until the 2526 fiscal year. The new request for 2526-related investments told us 230,967 dollars. We project that after these expenses, a little under 2.1 million in We project that after these expenses, a little under $2.1 million, including that CD, will remain in the reserves account. It keeps our reserves at a healthy level and still allows us to make these important strategic investments. And then just a really quick breakdown of the percentage-wise, what these reserves will go towards. So, almost 10.5 goes into sales efforts, 41.2% into different events and activations, 13% into infrastructure, 35% into marketing campaigns, and all of that is designed to strengthen Amarillo's position as a premier Route 66 destination. Any questions on that reserves request? Okay, I get to do fun stuff now. Not that that's not fun, but... So, what we will use all of this for and why Route 66? Route 66 is an international icon with things like Cadillac Ranch and the Big Texans. It's one of, Amarillo is one of its most recognizable stops. There aren't a ton of studies that I was able to find directly related to tourism on Route 66. I did find one from 2015 that found $289 billion in direct travel spending, was spent across the eight states that Route 66 runs through. Heritage tourism is extremely powerful. Visitors come for the nostalgia, but they stay for our lodging, or dining, or shopping, and of course, the attractions. And Route 66 Centennial next year gives us a rare once-in-a-lifetime spotlight for that, so we really want to capture everything we can from it. Some of those strategic investments are a national endowment of the arts, our town grant that we've applied for. That's for public art and wayfinding. Increased familiarization and site tour budgets to host decision-makers and influencers, and expanded budget for content creator and hosting. Investing in targeted ad campaigns to reach domestic and international travelers, and all of that is obviously built to convert interest into actual visitation. All of that really only matters if people hear about us. So we have our marketing campaigns with multi-channel marketing approach, digital print, PR, in-person events, Expedia, TripAdvisor, Route 66 Magazine. We really want to focus on storytelling and positioning Amarillo as a must-stop city on the Mother Road. All of that is to bring them here, and then we have our signature events that we'll tell them about as they're staying. So, obviously, the Texas Route 66 Festival, we have built this the past three years into a marquee event for Route 66. We will also be hosting the Centennial Caravan and the Great Race, which draws national attention. The Occidental Classic Series, which you mentioned earlier, will have a Route 66 theme. We are one of five satellite cities for the Route 66 National Kickoff Events. We will have an event surrounding the Capitol Christmas tree that will be coming through Amarillo in November. And we will also host the Texas premiere of the Texas Route 66 Main Street of America Documentary. With all of that going on, we do want to capture and share that experience, so we have, as I mentioned earlier, increased hosting for influencers, photographers, videographers, anyone to really tell Amarillo's Route 66 story. And we're collaborating on Route 66 film projects, extending our reach to new audiences, social media storytelling, and we'll be leveraging authentic first-person travel content to inspire trips and building itineraries. I will completely trip myself up if I try to read all of these conferences that are coming in to see us, but Route 66 was a huge, or has been a huge draw for various conferences and sporting events, as you can see. This is thousands of delegates filling our hotel rooms, our restaurants. It's strong proof of the power that Route 66 has and the influence, influencing meetings and conventions to book. Okay, so looking ahead, these are all of our strategic, no, a lot of our strategic initiatives, and none of this would have been possible without the partnerships that we have built regionally, nationally, and internationally over the past few years, and working on boosting Amarillo's reputation as a must-stop destination that we know we already are, have. I know I went through that really quickly. So, any questions, comments?
Questions, counsel? Hey, we appreciate the presentation, great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you guys over at CVB, y'all are doing a fantastic job. Counsel, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 090925-7 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Doug Nelson, you're up for our last two. Item 9M is high-demand job training, I believe.
You had one other one, mayor.
Did I miss one?
9L.
Oh, my fault. It was folded. Item 9L, Mr. Nelson, if you want to sit back down, calm down. Item 9L is Ms. Stephanie Coggins, receiving public information requests.
Yes, thank you, mayor, and this one should be a very quick item. We had House Bill 4214 that passed during this last regular session, and it now requires cities, excuse me, cities to formally notify the AG of our contact information for open record requests. And so what we've brought you today is a resolution that will formally designate our contact information. Also, because we work with Amarillo Police Department, and they have a records division that is dedicated to doing police-related records, we are also designating that as a second form of contact information for citizens to contact us through. Once this information is formally designated, we will provide it to the AG, and we have to update them on October 1st every year of our contact information. And then the AG will be creating a public database to make it easier for citizens across Texas to know where to go to request public records. So, this is really just formally designating that contact information, and then we'll have some forums and some website places that we will update with that information. Do you have any questions on this?
I don't believe so, Ms. City Secretary, thank you.
Great.
Would entertain a motion on item 9L.
I move to adopt Resolution 090925-8 as presented on the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, Mr. Doug Nelson is up for item 9M.
Thank you, mayor. All right, we're here to discuss the Texas Workforce Commission's High-Demand Job Training Grant. This program allows the TWC to invest in our local career and technical education with the Amarillo school districts, all five school districts that actually touch inside the city limits of Amarillo. So, we would be contributing, the AEDC would be contributing $150,000 to that program, and the Texas Workforce Commission through the Panhandle Workforce Development Board would also be contributing $150,000. So, each of the five school districts would get $30,000 to spend on their career and technical education. Most of that is equipment needs that they need for their vocational classes. And so today, we're asking y'all to approve this agreement between AEDC and PRPC, who is the administrative agent for the Panhandle Workforce Development Board. The AEDC Board approved this program on August 12 with a 5-0 vote.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? No?
No, sir.
All right, would ask for a motion on 9M.
I move to approve item 9M as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Nelson, on to our last item.
Last item of the night. This is to take action on Amendment Number 2 to a purchase and sale agreement between AEDC and Endries Enterprises LLC. Back in July of 2024, we, y'all, approved us to sell 19.97 acres of land in Centerport Business Park to Endries Enterprises. That sale was for $550,000, and they had the potential to get a rebate if they spent $10 million in capex. The rebate would be $114,250. So that's all well and good. What happened was, is we had, our business, Endries, had trouble with financing piece of this, and it finally got put in place. And so what we're asking y'all to do is extend the effective date of this agreement, this purchase and sale agreement, to August 1 of 2025. That gives time for him to construct, for the transaction of the land to occur, and for him to expend the $10 million.
Can I, can I ask, should that be amended to '26?
No, the effective date is August 1, and that effective date is what all the other dates piggyback on. So he has 12 months for this and 18 months.
So that's an accurate request right there of '25?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And that, everybody, all parties involved feel like that's adequate time?
It's adequate time, yes, sir. In addition, we had promised Mr. Endries that we would extend the Axiom Drive roadway by 75 feet so that he had enough roadway to enter this 19.97 acres. That got left out of the original purchase and sale agreement. This Amendment Number 2 formalizes our commitment to extend Axiom Drive by 75 feet and extend the water and sewer associated with that, at a cost of approximately $120,000. So, to give you a good feel for where we are financially with this deal, $550,000 purchase price, a rebate of $114,000, and about $120,000 in improvements. So we are going to net $200,000-ish. The cost, our cost basis in this acreage is less than $5,000 an acre, so we have less than $80,000, no, less than $100,000 in it. We're still going to make money by selling this to Mr. Endries. And the real benefit, this project does create jobs, not a lot, it's cold storage, but there is no tax abatement associated with this project, there's no other incentives, so he's going to put a $15 million capital investment into our community that will be taxed as soon as it's built.
We love those. Not a large water user, right?
No, sir, not at all. Flush-in toilets, really, is all.
And then fits over there pretty well with everybody.
Yeah, fits real nicely. It's just east of SSI Foods, right along Axiom Drive.
Questions for Mr. Nelson, gentlemen? No? Anything else you need to add?
No, sir.
Okay, we appreciate the presentation. Ask for a motion on 9N.
I move to approve item 9N as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second from Place 2, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, that concludes. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, you're adjourned, thank you guys for being here.